Well, we'll get started. We'll ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
I'm here.
Councilmember Askew? Councilmember Trace?
Here.
We'll begin with our current business and our city manager's presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, the budget that I'm going to present you tonight for your consideration is fiscally sound, preserves the public safety and services, and intensely focuses on being aligned in accordance with the city charter and the city council's strategic plan, goals, and objectives. The city's ability to implement its mission depends on financial sustainability. From a budget perspective, financial sustainability relies on a structural balance. Structural balance refers to a government's capacity to fund existing expenditures over time with its ongoing revenues. The city has a multifaceted strategy to address structural imbalance. The approach enables improvements in the city government operating within manageable overall scale. We continue to enhance technology and equipment, improve deployment and staff development to improve productivity and maintain quality of service. The annual budget is based on citywide objectives, council identified priorities, the city's strategic plan, and annual business plans developed by each department. Departments heads each year prepare a zero-based operating and capital budget request. Capital budget priorities are determined by council precedence, pressures on growth on local road and water systems, and the need to replace existing assets. The preliminary budget is then evaluated by a senior leadership team, and changes are made to ensure council receives a balanced budget that aligns with the city's financial strategy. And I can tell you that the first submitted budget, the directors made over a million dollars in cuts to the budget that they submitted to me as the city manager at my direction. In May 2019, the Census Bureau reported and ranked the city of St. Cloud as the ninth fastest in the nation, growing in the nation. Accordingly, the Bureau of Economic Business, BEABR, estimates the city population in 2018 at 46,005.19, and if I just did a small calculation of 5% to 7%, that puts us at 50,000 people in the city of St. Cloud. The United States Census Bureau says that we're at 55,000. Furthermore, the rate is measured with the output of the Building Department processing over 1,400 new home permits in 2018, and the department's continued pace to exceed that trend in the 2019 fiscal year. Our current challenges, recognizing the fiscal challenges facing the city, particularly the need to expand an operational space, has been among many of the priorities of the municipality. Exploring financing options for a much-needed public safety complex is a measure that will require innovation, financial ingenuity. The city has dedicated land previously purchased with police impact fees and park impact fees, and has assembled a task force of citizens and interested public to explore our options. Other challenges include an extensive five-year capital improvement program, which will need to be scrutinized and prioritized to match our available funding needs. Although we have implemented a salary survey in 2018, 2019, additional staffing will remain a challenge until the growth stabilizes and the lag in revenues diminish or become shorter. In addition, we will need to replace our joint-use facility, which is over 45 years old, over the next several years. The highlights of this budget, the 2019-2020, is presented with a millage rate of 5.1128, which has remained consistent for the last five years. At a 96% collection rate, ad valorem taxes are budgeted at $11,748.452, this positive increase of $1,712.16 or 17% over the 2018-2019 tax revenues. The 2019-2020 general fund proposed budget expenditures exceeds revenues by $1,200,368. This initial shortfall is primarily due to 3% wage increase, fire and police union contracts, three new positions, and increased operational cost. Let me talk about structural imbalance. The city has an established fund balance in accordance with the Government Accounting and Financial Standards Board Statement Number 54 Fund Balance Reporting. Establish the policy as 12.5% threshold to which fund balance must meet or exceed. The method of budgeting the unrestricted fund balance, money we did not spend last year, utilized this fiscal year to balance the budget, maintains the city consistently exceed the minimum 12.5% fund balance for reserve levels by 7.5% or 20%, equalling $8,594.781 in general fund reserves. The general fund consists of three positions: a police assess sergeant, which is actually a lieutenant, a training and safety coordinator, and a community development coordinator, who was requested by the city council or concierge, is what we call, to help our businesses navigate through building new businesses in St. Cloud. In the building permit fund, we're requesting one senior building inspector and a building code enforcement officer. Other personnel changes, like I said, a 3% pay increase, and medical and dental costs have increased by 8.4% and 5% respectfully, and I've requested that the city absorb that. Additionally, the fire and police union contracts and other pay adjustments associated with these contracts increased the public safety personnel budget by 3.8%. Fuel costs have increased by 12%. Debt service has decreased by 2% due to less interest being paid to service the outstanding debt on the capital improvement revenue bond 2010A series. The budget for the city of St. Cloud is projected at $169,028.170, which is 5% increase over current year's adjusted budget due to the growth in the collection of impact fees to fund much-needed infrastructure. Revenue streams are sufficiently diversified, with the largest revenue source being other financing resources, which are transfers from other funds such as utility tax fund, St. Cloud, OUC inter-local fund, and the direct payment from each of the business funds. The largest component of the general fund expenditures is personnel cost, at a cost of $31,684.162. This is an increase of 9% or $2,847.71 over the current adjusted budget, mainly due to the 3% salary adjustment. Thank you, Mayor.
If you want to have a question?
I do. So, Bill, I know we've talked about this before, and I guess we haven't changed our policy yet, but we had talked about that 12.5% fund balance policy was too low, and that we wanted to change the policy to bump it up. So, I guess where are we with that policy? And I know we have new council. I don't know if Keith was here when we had that discussion, but, you know, 12.5 is, in my opinion, too low. And, you know, I don't know where are we at with that?
We haven't changed the policy, and again, we're open to doing that. I actually spoke to the previous finance director, and he recommended we didn't do it and even have a discussion until this year. Again, we are meeting the GFOA required standards, but I always like to have that pad in there in case we have an emergency. So, we probably should raise that threshold a little bit, but I'd like to have more discussion about that before we do that.
Yeah, because my worry would be if we have a natural disaster or something, we have to put $4 million out, and FEMA takes five years to repay.
It takes forever. Two. We're at two right now.
But, yeah, no, I'm all for raising it just...
But, I mean, so what if that happened? I mean, so what if we had 20%, and then, I mean, we had to expend some of this money for a FEMA? What happens?
That money would come out of that reserve balance, and then we'd have to wait for that money to come back.
Right. It's not that we get into noncompliance with someone, right? I mean, it's not like we get...
There's no police. Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know if there was a note in, like, the auditor's report that we aren't meeting our own.
I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
So, a little formulation...
State your name.
I'm sorry.
State your name for...
Wendy Colazo, Finance Director.
Thank you.
So, a little formulation for the 12.5 and why we need a little bit further conversation is also, not only do we meet the requirement of 12.5%, but you get away from having department directors really budget accordingly, too, and we get away from budgeting really close, because that's a performance measure, too, right? So, we also need to establish the reason why we haven't said why 12.5 isn't right or wrong is because we have to measure liquidity. How much does it take? What's our highest expenditure we've had? What's our lowest revenue? And that will give us a calculation of where we should be and what percentage we should be at, too. According to fund balance and the pamphlets you probably received, there were little blue ones. It also says that in the policy, we should have a method in which to replace that money three to four years if a natural disaster were to happen, and we're developing that at that time. So, that's why it hasn't happened, because there's a lot of formulation. It's not really just one number and where we want to be, and, you know, Rick had his thoughts on it. We're taking those into consideration as well, along with the formulation of why we should be at 12.5. Why do we think 15%? And the data is going to come from, like I said, comparing what's our highest revenue to our, you know, highest expenditure, and making sure that that threshold is covered to maintain our operation in the event of just a catastrophe. Because we can't just plan for the catastrophe, we also have to plan that can we afford this business if something goes wrong? That includes, like, what happens if we can't collect mobility fees? What happens if we can't just plan for a hurricane that's, you know, 30,000 feet? We got to get deeper. And to do that, I don't feel comfortable telling you 12.5 is not enough, and I don't feel comfortable at a 20% because that gives... That doesn't give us enough... Your department should be able to budget accordingly, that we are planning, and those cushions are established, not just having this savings account that we can never touch. It's just not really implemented that way. So, if you can accept that as something that we're working on right now, you know, to give you true numbers and reasons why behind it, other than just a no.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Wendy a little bit. She's pushed out to 20. I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see if we could go from 12.5 to 15. I think this next year, if we could bump it up to 15 and get that money there, I think every year or two that we could move 1.5%, 2% increase, it'll sure look the... Check marks will look a whole lot clearer.
I think 15% is very feasible.
Can we do that?
Absolutely, sir. I think 15% is feasible. At this moment, I'm not going to tell you that that is the number we should be at. I think it's reasonable. I think 15% is fair. 20%, 25%, we're getting up there, and it makes me a little... 15% is definitely something that I will give you the numbers for, that if that's... That's a more reasonable number to me at this point, just raw numbers. But, I'm a girl that likes to have some backup with that and tell you the reasons why we're going to get to 15, but it's reasonable, absolutely.
Okay. I don't want to waste your time to do it if the rest of the council members are not...
I think 15% is certainly something we need to do and certainly aim for.
I'd like to see if we could do that.
I just think 12.5 is way too low personally.
I do.
Yeah.
We can do that.
See if we can move to 15.
We'll do that, and then moving forward, I think we'll look every year, come back and have that discussion until we bump it up 1% or 2%.
1% or 2%? I don't...
Because, again, my goal has always been to 25% is this my fiscal goal, but...
Yes, I can see that. If you're healthy, that's one thing.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. Good point. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Number two, the proposed budget recommendation from the Finance Committee. You're on. You'll state your name, address for the record. And just let me say, we appreciate all the work that we know that all of you guys have put into on the committee to do this work, and we thank you so much for all the time and effort.
Thank you. My name's David Reinhardt. I'm the chairman of the Finance Board. This is something we do take very seriously, because we feel like we're representing the citizens, so accountability and transparency is kind of what we strive for, and I'm sure you guys all do the same. I'm listening to you guys talk about the emergency. We had discussed several years ago about having an emergency designation once you get over a certain percentage. Let's say, once we're at 15%, we would designate money, and this was just all recommendations. So, I don't know where it ever went after our recommendations, but we had discussed it where if you had... Once you hit 15, we would move it to a set amount aside solely for that emergency, but then continue if we... Right now, we're at 20%, if I'm correct. But, a sidebar, otherwise, when we went through the budget, we were here until 11:30. We were pretty quarter till. So, but we had a lot of questions, a lot of things, you know, stood out. I thought Wendy and Dawn and everyone did a... Bill all did such a wonderful job, especially Wendy being so new. I think she got a good grasp of the budget as quickly as she could with the time that she's had, so I commend her for that, and Dawn, and them putting her up to speed, and her just putting the effort in. I thought she did a wonderful job. With that, there was a few things stood out. We had some... There was a budget issue we were discussing towards the very end where I think it was public waste or something like that, where they put, it was 145,000 or 150,000 into an account, and I think they were... Shouldn't have been in that account, and I think Wendy was going to adjust it or change it and take it out of the account. But, it was like a contract where they were going to have to clean out a tank or something like that. So, those adjustments, we had a training concern that really stood out, a 296% increase in training. They explained why they had to do that. We were just, you know, 14,000, 14,000, and suddenly it went to like 33,000. And so, I was like, we just suddenly decided to train everybody all at once at the same time? It was just seemed a little inconsistent, but training, we understand, is a key, especially for that division, I believe, it was, I'd have been building and zoning, and understandingly certifications were needed of that. I just... It just seemed like suddenly you're... 296% is a huge increase for training. What were you doing the other years? Why just 14,000, and now you're into the 30s? So, it just... It stood out to us, so we questioned it pretty hard, and they came to it. We had some overtime budgets that we were concerned with and had to ask for some explanation. Some were amounts were very high with median percentages. We saw higher percentages of increase, and the number of the dollar amount wasn't as high. So, we would be very specific in questioning the directors or Bill or Wendy to, can they explain what's going on? And I thought the board was very thorough. I thought we did the best we could with all the information we had, and we made our recommendations. Again, Bill and Wendy seem to be taking notes to clean things up that they thought needed to be addressed as well. So, I thought, all in all, the budget, they did a great job with it, and the explanations seemed pretty fair, and whatever we decided or questioned, they seemed to understand it and agree that, let's look at this a little more. And they were going to address the issues as they felt needed. So, I think they did a great job, and I appreciate the opportunity, but our... We recommended the budget with some of those concerns being addressed, and I'm sure they forwarded that information to you guys. But, all in all, I thought they did a good job, and I appreciate the opportunity for allowing me to serve on this committee. I look forward to continuing to serve, and I've been asked to serve. The chief has asked me to be on a part of this committee, reference to a public safety building, and ways that we can try to get this to come through here, and we can get this moving. But, he has a vision, and he's wanting to try to figure things out, and he's asked me to be a part of it, so I'm very honored that he's put me into that as well. So, thank him for that, and again, thank you guys for the opportunity.
Do we have any questions?
No. Thank you.
Very grateful. Thank you for your continued service rather than belling on us. I know that's a lot of work, man. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And we want you to stay on and help us find that money for that public safety building, okay? We'll keep you on if you do that. Item number three, the presentation of possible refunding of the capital improvement revenue bonds, tactical series 2010B by financial advisor Jay Glover of Public Financial Management.
Mayor, council member, city manager Jay Glover from Public Financial Management. And we've assisted the city in the past when there's been a need to access the capital markets, whether that's to fund new money projects or to refinance the existing debt, which we're here to talk about today. So, if you go back in history a little bit, in 2010, the city issued their taxable capital improvement revenue bond series 2010B, and those were issued to fund a variety of road projects. At that point in time, we were right in the middle of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, which was part of the stimulus package associated with the economic meltdown that happened at that point in time. And there was a product that allowed municipalities to issue taxable debt and receive a subsidy or a rebate from the federal government equal to 35% of the interest paid on that taxable debt. And that essentially allowed you to borrow money at lower rates than you could in the traditional tax-exempt market. So, the city took advantage of that product, and that bond transaction's been outstanding since 2010. It had a 10-year call protection on it, so that bond is now callable on September 1 of 2020. So, we're approaching the point where you can actually refinance that for some debt service savings, just like you would refinance your mortgage on your house, where you issue a new loan at a lower interest rate and thus lower your annual payments each year. So, in getting specific with the numbers, it's about $34 million of debt outstanding at this point in time. The interest rates on it range from 5.01% to 5.99%. And again, those are taxable interest rates, and you're supposed to get a 35% rebate from the federal government. Unfortunately, this thing called sequestration came along, as the federal government was also trying to balance their budget and reduce the deficit and whatnot. So, they've actually not been providing the full subsidy to issuers that have these Build America bonds outstanding. So, you've actually been getting a less subsidy than you expected, which obviously results in you paying more debt service, which is one of the reasons we also want to advance refund this deal, and I'll get into specific numbers in a second. But, again, it's callable September 1 of 2020. So, what we're proposing here today is that the city embark on a financing that would allow us to advance refund that outstanding bond, and we would put the bond proceeds into an escrow that would then pay the old bonds off on their call date against September 1 of 2020. We're estimating that the city could save about $2 million on a net present value basis by doing this transaction, and that would, again, be no extension of the final maturity. So, we're just lowering the debt service, and each and every year, we're not extending the maturity of the debt. That would actually lower the annual payments about $135,000 through 2040. Again, 2040 is the existing final maturity of the debt we're contemplating refunding, and that net present value debt service figure includes all the costs associated with doing such a transaction. So, again, you would lower your debt service payment by about $135,000 a year, and we think that estimate's fairly conservative based on conservative interest rates that I've run at this point in time. One other advantage of actually doing this refunding, other than just saving in terms of a lower debt service number, is with the recent issues with the federal government, the city's actually not received their most recent subsidy payment back. So, there's issues not only with sequestration, but there's also issues with timely receiving that subsidy payment. So, again, the city's been paying more debt service than we originally anticipated. So, by refunding this transaction, it's really a twofold benefit. One, you can lower your debt service on an annual basis, and you can also eliminate all of the risk associated with these subsidy bonds, because when we do this financing, we'd be issuing traditional tax-exempt bonds, so there wouldn't be no dealing with the federal government for an interest rate subsidy or rebate. You would just have tax-exempt bonds outstanding, and you would be paying a tax-exempt interest rate. So, again, the benefit is twofold. One, lower debt service payments on an annual basis, and these bonds would be issued with a fixed interest rate. So, once we were able to lock in those savings, they would be locked in. If interest rates went up in the future, we'd not be exposed to any rising interest rates. You would also eliminate the risk of further sequestration or decreased subsidy from the federal government, or at some point in the future, this federal government decides they don't want to provide the rebate, which I guess they could do if they wanted to. So, again, we think this is a good transaction to move forward with. What we are looking for today is just some direction from you all, that this is something you're interested in pursuing. If that is the case, there's probably about a 60-day process for your bond counsel, city attorney, myself, your finance staff, to actually go out and prepare the financing documents. The main one being a bond resolution that would come back before you at a subsequent meeting, probably a couple of months from now, for your final approval. Assuming that resolution is approved, we would move forward with the transaction, assuming we could meet a minimum savings parameter. And let me just expand on that a little bit. The $2 million of net present value debt service savings that I mentioned equates to about 6% of the refunded bonds par amount. So, I'm getting in the weeds a little bit here, but when you look at doing a refunding, you want to make sure you do it at the opportune time, because you really only get one crack at the apple to refund this debt. So, we don't want to move too early, or we don't want to wait too late. We really want to time it when interest rates are the most opportune. So, in order to determine that, we actually look to maximize the savings when you compare it to the par amount of bonds being refunded. And again, this would achieve 6% of the refunded bonds par amount, and the GFOA, the government finance offers as association, really sets guidelines of anything between 3% to 5%, depending on how conservative you would like to be, is a refunding that you should move forward with. And again, this is 6% on a conservative basis, and really, anything over 5% is when the GFOA says you should look to start taking advantage of refunding opportunities like this. I'll also point out, for those of you that follow the interest rate markets, we've gotten back down to historically low interest rate levels. There's an expectation that the Federal Reserve is going to lower interest rates up to three times this year, maybe even... Probably likely this week will be the first Fed action to lower interest rates. So, we do think we're back to historic low interest rates. While the Fed is supposed to lower rates, the markets have actually already priced those interest rate cuts in place. So, the market's interest rates now really reflect those interest rate cuts. So, what we would like to do is to move expeditiously to get you all to approve this transaction so that we are able to, when we think the market is right, move into the market as quickly as possible to take advantage of this opportunity and maximize savings. So, again, if for some reason we get six... Or two months from now, and interest rates have risen and the savings go away, there's really no cost to the city. So, all of the financing costs associated with the transaction are paid from proceeds of the loan and are contingent on the financing closing. So, there's really no risk in you actually approving the resolution to move forward, because if something happens and the transaction falls away, there's no cost to the city for that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
After having listened to all that, I feel like I'm back in seminary in my first year of Hebrew class. You know, wow, that is so much information.
Did you say your second year?
Yeah. Yeah, I had to take two or three years of that to get the handle on it, so...
The short story is, we can refinance an existing obligation to save up to $2 million on a net present value basis.
That I understood, and that I liked a lot, and then I also liked the fact you said it would... You could... It would be paid for out of the proceeds of the savings. Is that not correct?
Correct, yes. All the cost of the financing are paid from proceeds of the loan, and they're already taken into account when quoting the net present value debt service savings figure.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of reducing the interest on $34 million.
How much funding is coming out of your... Are you getting?
Me, personally, we generally get paid about a dollar a bond, so that would be about $30,000 in this case to do the financing. In total, we have built in about $200,000 of financing cost into the transaction, which would include your bond counsel, who is the legal counsel who drafts all the financing documents. You would have a disclosure counsel who drafts a large offering document that goes out to the marketplace to accept the bids. We would have to go to the rating agencies to get the city's credit rating for the bonds, and then there's a number of other smaller professional fees paid.
You have to do a lot of work. I understand.
Yeah, and I just want to hit on one thing, because it was something you all just talked about related to fund balance, because when we do go to the rating agencies, perhaps the one thing they look at more than anything when rating the city's credit or any municipality's credit is what are those fund balance levels? So, the fact that you do have a strong fund balance, which is in excess of what your policy is, will be a good credit rating positive when we actually go out to get these bonds rated. So, maintaining that fund balance is a very important element as you look at the budget annually and obviously continuing to keep that in place, especially given the kind of, you know, environment we're in with natural disasters and other things. I do want to point that out.
So, you would be doing it at the right time when, for the best bank for the buck for the city?
That would be our goal, yeah. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball to say exactly where rates are going to go, but with them being at historically low interest rates, you know, there's a lot more likelihood that they can go up than they can go back down. So, what we want to do is get the financing documents prepared so we can be in the market really on a week or two's notice, as opposed to waiting to the point where we think it's good, and then we need two months to get the documents prepared.
Got you. So, this is just in the little schedule about sustaining debt, which is kind of the only... One of the only mentions of this, the debt is... It shows it under traffic impact fees. Is that something that we collateralized for this debt, or is it something different? Like, what's promised to repay it?
Good question. So, it's... The debt is actually secured by what we call a covenant to budget and appropriate from legally available non-ad valorem revenue. So, you promised the bondholders that you would identify in your budget a non-ad valorem revenue stream to make the payments, because ad valorem is off limits, because it requires a referendum to pledge ad valorem taxes to repayment of debt. I think it's been the city's practice to actually use the impact fees to actually make the debt service payment. But, if for some reason impact fees were insufficient to make the debt service payments, you would be obligated to identify another non-ad valorem revenue to make those payments. And we would suggest using the same credit structure to finance this transaction. The markets won't accept impact fees as a credit for bonds because they're so uncertain and volatile. They want something else, and then you use those to make the payments. They want something else, and then you use those to make the payments.
And then what's the interest rates?
Yeah, so 5.01% to 5.99% on the outstanding debt. And we're projecting the new bonds will have an all-in interest cost of about 3%. And again, that 5% is a taxable rate compared to the 3% tax exempt, so, but that's equating to the $2 million in net present value savings.
I mean, I know, I know this was just about the Build America Bonds, but are there other bonds that have refinancing provisions that we can?
Yeah, part of what we do is annually, we look at the debt book to see if there are other refunding opportunities. And at this point, this is really the only opportunity we have, because different types of debt have different call provisions, and there's certain restrictions on when you can call debt, and some debt has penalties and whatnot. But this is a, this is a par call next year, so we're really at the opportune time when we can get this one done.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I got, sorry. Maybe I'm, I just am not understanding this correctly, but you're saying you should refinance when you can save 3% to 5%, and this is potentially 6%? So I'm not following how the interest rates worked out to potentially 6% when you just said it.
So, so those are two, two different things. The interest rates on the outstanding bonds range from 5% to 6%.
Mm-hmm.
The new bond's interest rate will be 3%. So those are interest rates. The other percentages I was talking about is when you would recommend moving forward with the refunding. So you take your net present value debt service number, which is $2 million, and you compare that to the par amount of bonds being refunded, which is about $34 million, and you take that percentage, and that's about 6%.
Okay.
If it's above 5%, that's the recommended level GFOA says to move forward. So if you take, $2 million is about 6% of $34 million.
Okay.
So if that number's above 5%, we would recommend moving forward. And one of the things that would be included in the bond resolution that comes back before you is a minimum savings number. So you're going to set certain parameters whereby we can move forward, and if that savings number dips below that recommended savings number, we won't move forward, because we're just not going to do this transaction for the sake of doing the transaction. We would put it on the shelf to wait for that savings number to come back above that parameter.
And then my last question is to our finance director. Is this something that you are behind recommending for the city? I mean, it sounds good to me, but I don't, you know, all the particulars of the finances.
Absolutely, as looking through it and with Jay's explanation, and going through the 6% par value is a big deal. Par value being your face value of what we're going to get back is a huge marker. Two, it's not something that we're just, it's a savings, really, bond, and we have not gotten, we get out of the business of waiting for subsidy from the government that at this point would be about 600K that we have not received. So thankfully, we're not banking on that for anything that we have not, gets us out of that business and secures us a little bit better. So I'm in full agreement. I don't really see any cons, which was something that came up in the finance committee, too. And we work with Jay to see future opportunities as well. So all in all, it's a win. You know, we get the point structure, we get a good percentage on par value, you know, and we have no recommendation other than to move forward with it.
So one last question. So you're saying that, you know, we haven't gotten the reimbursement that we were supposed to get as part of the bonds? I mean, how are they, can they just, like, not do what was in the bond documents? I mean, is there a way to, like, collect on this money and say, you know, you know what I mean?
It's a really good question, because...
Okay, we're just not going to pay our, we're not going to pay our bonds. If you're not going to give us our reimbursement.
It's a great question. A lot of municipal issuers used this type of financing, because it was a lower-cost alternative, assuming you would get your rebate back. Unfortunately, the rebates have not worked as people thought they would. The biggest issue has been sequestration. So the federal government's keeping, like, 6.2% of the 35% rebate. But the issue with not getting the rebate at all, I think that's due to some of the issues with the federal government shutting down and some of the gridlock up in DC, that hopefully, there's been a budget resolution, I hear, within the House and the Senate. So hopefully, once that passes, the city will get that payment back. So I think the bigger issue is, there's just been a delay in getting that payment, but there's full expectation that you will get that rebate back.
To receive it or receive.
But, I mean, for me, saving $135,000 a year is really good money, but it's almost equally as important, just to get out of that business altogether, is what most issuers are doing, because of all the uncertainty up there. Who knows what's going to happen in 2020 in an election? I mean, and to answer your question, the federal government can do whatever they want to do. So yes, they could say, "We need that money, and we're not going to give it back to you. So let's just get out of that business." I wish, I wish that wasn't the case, but, I mean, they, they essentially can do what they want to do.
Just seems like if you have loan documents, like, you know.
Gee, that's good news. Oh, I guess if they violated the bond covenants, could we just refund early and not have to wait until September 2020?
See, see, that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. We're doing an advance refunding. So we're going to put the proceeds in an escrow when we close, and those bonds will be legally de-fee, so they're no longer outstanding. So yeah, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to take advantage of that before we get to the 2020 date.
Yeah, you said 60 days, something like that?
Yeah, so it would take about 60 days to get the financing documents together. So you'll get another crack at the apple. Obviously, we would hope that you would approve it at that point in time, because there is , you know, significant work to get those financing documents together, but unless, and we'll obviously have a better sense of where the market is in 60 days and can update you on the savings levels at that point as well.
Well, I think, one thing he's looking for from us is a consensus to move forward on the paperwork.
Sure.
Is there any opposition to that? So we have a unanimous consensus. Please move forward and save us lots of money.
We will hope to see you in about 60 days with an attractive interest rate market.
I have, I have one question. This is kind of chasing another rabbit. You talked about this money that the federal government, you know, should be, do you have any experience that if we had a federal lobbyist, that that would help getting funds released, or is that just a political issue?
I, I think it's just a workload issue. I think the people that process, because there's a, there's a form that the city submits every six months on an interest payment date with the amount to get the amount refunded. I think it's a workload issue. So those people, when the federal government shuts down, that paperwork just stacks up on the desk, and then once they get back to work, it's just a matter of working through all the people that did these types of bonds. So I, I think it's, it's just more of a timing issue, as opposed to the federal government is into, I don't think they have any anticipation of not paying you back. I think it's just they need time to process that payment.
Any other question?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jay, we appreciate it. Brinkus, item number four, Finance Director Presentation of the 2019-2020 Proposed Budget. You're going to give us the financial highlights?
Yes, sir.
And if you'll state your name, thank you. Wendy?
Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Okay. I submit to you the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget. Highlights are available that will follow through and then get to the departmental as issued in the agenda. First one, obviously, is the purpose of this is to present the fiscal year proposed budget and give an overview. What we're going to be outlining is the citywide budget, the general fund budget, departmental budget summaries, where we'll go individually, and then, of course, just a reminder of the adoption schedule for you. Citywide budget. $169.1 million, $8.3 million or 5% of that right now current year budget, is due to growth in the collection of impact fees to the fund infrastructure. The reserves at the end of 2020 are projected to be $8.6 million, which is a 7.5 increase from the 12.5 threshold, or fund balance policy, keeping us at a 20% fund balance currently. Advalorm taxes, this is just taking out all advalorm taxes for the city as a revenue source, is projected at $11.7 million, giving you $1.7 million higher than the current year. The increase in advalorm, of course, is based almost in 10% of property values going up, and then, of course, maintaining the millage rate at 5.11, which has been the same rate for five years consecutively. Impact and mobility, we wanted to give you a visual. Sorry, on this screen, it's a little bit smaller than on the big screen, but there's your, we are, your mobility impact revenues projected at $7.9 million, right? Trending to be a million, a million seven more than the current year expected, due to inflation and the basis of the indexes. So you can see the increases between the previous, or the current year and the new proposed year. And please, if you need a stop man anytime, please do so. Personnel services, we're going to give you a highlight overview, 30,000 feet here, of $44.7 million, which is $3.9 million or 10% more than the current year budgeted. What's it relevant to? That's not five new positions in the departments of police, planning, building, permits, and the city manager departments, which are described in your budget books as far as the purpose and function of those positions. A 3% cost of living for all eligible employees was done across the board to keep pace with the surrounding competitors. And, you know, we definitely want to keep our personnel and keep that up to speed as best as we can, and 3% will keep us there after the pay study. Fire and police union contracts and other pay adjustments associated with this contracts increase the budget for public safety 3.8% because of those. And of course, medical and dental, as mentioned before, with an 8.4 and 5% respectfully increase, the city is absorbing this, and, you know, finds an additional benefit for the employees is worthwhile and necessary. Operating expenses totaling $46.1 million, which is $44.5K or .9 less than the current year. I wanted to make a notice of this, because obviously, department heads, as you've been noted, were in charge with reducing, and they did so by a million and a half in operating expenses, and then were asked again to reduce by, travel and training by 25%, which, if anybody's been across a budget review, is quite a difficult thing, so I think should be noted on that.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
On page three of the city managers' highlights, it says one of the reasons that the budget is, had a $1.2 million shortfall, was increase in operational costs, but there you're saying the operation, operating expenses is less.
Sure.
So which one of these is?
Okay, so this is in the general fund, and this is overall as a city. So overall as a city, we reduced our expenditures, but the general fund operating is, it's a 5% increase to do cost of business.
Isn't this overall in the city, though? This?
No, it's the general fund proposed budget. That's a highlight. Yeah, the first paragraph he highlighted, you meant?
On page three?
Yes, I'm on page three, budget proposal, and it says, "General proposed budget expenditures exceeded, exceeded revenues."
Okay. So it's just the general fund?
Yes, ma'am. So capital outlay, $6.5 million, which is $3 million less than the current year. We've highlighted some current projects. If you wanted to go to the back of your budget books, you could see a buy fund, all the ones that we do have. But we, we highlighted some of the major ones. Virginia Park Facility, the Ball Field Improvements, Phase Two, Downtown Phase Two, Master Paving Plan, Chisholm Park, and new meter installations, just to highlight. Citywide budget, again, a couple other visuals, right? The total budget by the fund is at $169 million you're looking for, and what we wanted to do is give you an idea, where is that $169 being spread across the funds? General fund is taking in at $41.8, which is the biggest piece of the pie, 25% there, right? Going down, you have your capital projects fund at $3.9 million, impact fee funds, $20 million, and progressively going down. But we wanted to give you a good oversight of where by fund is $169 million being, you know, allocated through. In the event you're looking at other funds, and you say, "Hey, Wendy, I have no idea what other funds are." That includes the Billment Permit Fund, the Building Permit Fund, Motor Pool Fund, the St. Cloud OUC Interlocal Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and all the self-insurance funds. We group them together as governmental units, you know, so to save space, really. So it's, you could see that it says eight departments, that's what it includes. Any questions on that? Likewise, the budget, again, $169 million in expenditures, where is that going? Personnel services at $44.9, taking a big cut of that pie. Operating expenses, you know, $46.1 million. Capital outlay, debt service, grants and aids, transfers, and ending reserves are all being reported in order to come up with the $169 million spread. Again, didn't plan on the TV, so sorry for the little shortness there of the funded positions, but we just wanted to be transparent here, right? City council going all through all your departments, what their current budget was on positions, funded positions, and if they had any negative or positives, meaning increase or decrease in their departments. As you can see, what it totals out to is the five positions we outlined for you in each department, which overall, as if we can put humans into percentages, that's a 7.5% increase of human bodies in this place in order to, to operate. General fund. And let me get there for you. Any questions at this point?
Did we get this presentation?
This is brand new, that I was told would be exciting and new for you all.
Oh, it's real exciting.
Before the meeting?
No, I don't think so.
Bill?
No.
Because we've asked for presentations before meetings.
That's correct.
So we need to give you that presentation. Okay. Understood. So I'll take that as not knowing, and I would give you that presentation moving forward. I didn't know you needed that. I was just, on a Friday, I was told you needed an 80-slide presentation, and I made it happen. So however, I could tell you that this is just a pullout of all the numbers you're looking at, so you don't have to scroll through all these pages. So there's nothing outside. If you read this, it's really just a visual for you, just to hopefully get some confidence, you know? But we'll definitely get you the printout, so you can read them, you know, tonight, and, you know, have any other questions. The general fund. The general fund budget totals $51.6 million, which is 4.7% or 10% more than the current year budget. General fund is funded 98% from operating revenues, and then a million two, which is what you see at the beginning of the highlights, in reserves, or 2%. So we're 98 funded by our own operating, 2% of the reserves is what was used this year. The general fund reserves at the end of fiscal year 2020 are projected to be $9.8 million, equivalent to a 20% of operating expenditures. That's that, again, reiterance of the 7.5 above the 12.5. Total budget by department, $51.06 million. We did just a spread of all the expenditures, all the budget through the departments, fire, police, public works, general government, which includes departments such as human resource, information technology, things of that nature, parks and rec, economic development, transfers, and then reserves. Total budget by expenditure types, again, same information, $51 million here, 50 point, 51.6 million dollars. And separated for you by type, just same dollars, just going $31 million into Personnel Services, 10.7 into operating expenses, 293,180 into Capital Outlay, 108 in Grants and Aids, 218 in Transfers, and 8.594 sitting in Reserves. Any questions? We're going to go into individual departmental budgets, and I believe the only, it's not a change, but we're going straight from the agenda, so I apologize, you're going to have to flip back and forth a little bit through the departments, just because, I guess, back in the day, they used to do them in this order, and the book has been organized by division. Okay? All right, so I have, under the general fund, the first one going through is Parks and And I will give you the page number to help you.
98. Is that correct?
He's good. Yes, sir, 98. I'm going to have to flip through this whole thing.
You're kidding me.
Huh?
Yeah, I got it by your...
Sorry, I'm going to have to flip myself. We put it in a different order. That sucks. Yeah. Okay.
We can go based on that order, if you...
It's up to you. I know that it's a nuisance, and I know you guys get crazy about not following the agenda, so I was trying to do whatever you'd like. So I, if you want to go through this order, I'm okay with it, just if you don't mind me clicking back and forth, or if you want to go in the order of the book, whatever's more convenient to you. I'm just trying to follow the rules here.
Whatever's quickest for you. We'll figure it out as we go.
All right. So we're going to go in order, because you know us accountants, we like function in order. That way, I don't drive you crazy. Page 39 is city council, they're first up in order for you. Page 39 is city council, they're first up in order for you. And all we did was, as you see this budget, you obviously have salaries, you know, personnel costs, operating, and then capital. And we just gave you a visual of that exact information so that it was open. I'm going to go through variances and as I was informed, you'd like to go to, for variances above $10,000?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so as you can see, just a visual of contingency, 8.5 million dollars for city council. Operating expenses are at 5%, 463,000, and then 1% in personnel costs at 97,831. Again, just a visual of the numbers that you're looking, you know, in the report. Significant variances, which are listed for the city council. The only increase, which is not going to apply, is $2,000 above, which was travel. So nothing to note above 10 for city. Am I in the right one?
You're in, city clerk. If I could talk about those, Wendy?
Yes, sure.
The first thing in the variances on page 40 is I added $91,000 for federal lobbying. And I wanted to bring to your attention that currently we're spending almost $250,000 on lobbying, if we include that number. We spend $82,000 on Sewell Point. We spend $20,000 for Olay and 57,400 currently with Gray Robinson. And I wanted to know if you wanted to keep that 91,000 in there for federal lobbying.
Well, we understand the cost, but what could be the benefit of some of these federal lobbying efforts?
Again, I, I spoke to Gray Robinson and they, and I sent you the proposal they sent also. I think there, there's a potential of getting money from FEMA for a public safety complex and in addition, probably some water type issues the federal government helps with. What, what I do understand on federal lobbying, it's a multi-year process. It could take two or three years before we get, have a success. And so, like I said, my only concern on that is I, I can't tell you what the return on investment is, even I've been through that package that they gave us.
I don't think, I don't think it's any kind of guaranteed. I think it's a pay to play, like if we don't have somebody there, we're, we're going to get zero.
Yeah, you don't get anything if you're not playing. And, but I think-
I mean, I've, I've gave my comments multiple occasions about our current lobbying, you know, people, that I think we should make a cut.
I don't think we're, that's on the, on, up for review again. So, but I certainly think we need to have the, you know, when you went, when we came a, an entitlement city, we certainly need to have someone advocating for us on the federal level when we, when we reach that threshold. If we don't, then I think we would certainly regret it in the long term because we can certainly see where, you know, if you add up all the numbers, where lobbying has certainly paid off for us, even this past year.
So Deputy Mayor Matheny, did you want to make a recommendation on funding levels on that? Is, is now the time to make changes like that if, if we're wanting to, or?
Now's the time, you're saying? I don't know.
You can make a, you can make a budget recommendation. I mean, like I said, we, we spent $82,000 on Sewell Point, $20,000 on Olay, and 57,400 on Gray Robinson.
What's the first 82,000 on what?
Sewell Point, that's Mr. Barrett.
Sewell?
That's his name of his company.
How much, 82?
82,000.
Give me those again.
It's Sewell Point, Mr. Barrett's company, 82,000, Olay, 20,000, and Gray Robinson's 57,400. And then the federal lobbying's 91.
What is your recommendation on Olay? You're, you're the representative serving on Olay.
Actually, I, I think we should give Olay another chance. I am working with Mr. Bruce from Olay right now with the, the advanced welding program. We're actually applying for a grant, we're working with them. So again, you know, those multi-year lobbying efforts, you know, it takes, but are actively working on that.
We know Olay impacts us indirectly, but yet directly because of so much funding that they've secured for schooling and education is a, is a big issue and that impacts us big time, ultimately.
And if you think, I mean, that's up to you, do you, do you think we get a benefit by going up as a group? I, I do from both a relationship building when we go up with the Olay group and lobbying together with Kissimmee and the city and then Osceola County. I think that's so important as we move forward. Again, you know, they, one of the big lobbying efforts is, is the bridge and we're going to benefit from that, you know. And they've just made some really nice contracts with a couple companies, so I think we'll benefit from that.
Well, I've certainly been to, to Tallahassee and walked up and down the halls and seen who has the most influence, and certainly Gray Robinson is, is the person, is the company of influence in, in Tallahassee, hands down, there's just no doubt about it. When you walk into those offices of the legislators, Gray Robinson is the one that has the influence. I would recommend personally that we drop Barrett, stay with Gray Robinson, go with Olay, and then add the federal having, federal lobbying would be my position.
So one thing too, to speak about Olay for a second, is that you didn't mention, was they are the ones who got us the turnpike.
Yes, ma'am.
They got us the turnpike interchange. I mean, if you want to talk about return on investment, $20,000 and we got a $10 million turnpike interchange. I mean, I think Olay is fantastic. I think Gray Robinson, same thing, when you walk around with Gray Robinson, people come out of the woodwork to shake hands and make sure that they're seen and want to say hi and all that. I mean, I would support the mayor's recommendation.
I'm fine with both, both your recommendations. Well, I guess my comment on that was I thought Bill Barrett dealt with a lot of the day-to-day throughout the year, so I don't know if that would have to be picked up by someone.
I think we have a lot of redundancy right now. A lot of helping, I'm helping, I'm helping, I'm helping.
I'm working with Gray Robinson, I wonder, I think you have redundancy there.
Yeah, I think when we bumped Gray Robinson, because when I got on council, Gray Robinson initially was like, what? Like $10,000 or $7,000 or something, so we bumped them up to 57 to have them a more active role, but we didn't cut back anything.
But when you look at the actual dollars that we've, that have been secured, they've come through primarily, in my opinion, the work of Robson and the influence they have. And Olay, yeah, Olay's been big. Okay, can we go that consensus then? The consensus was?
The consensus was to keep Olay and keep Gray Robinson and we'll be removing Sewell Point at $82,000 reduction in cost.
And that would cover almost?
The 91.
The 91,000 that you're adding up in federal lobbyists, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, the next item is community group support and that increased this year by 50,000. It's $25,000 to Help Now, $25,000 to Community Vision for advanced manufacturing scholarships for St. Cloud residents. That'll be administered through Community Vision, so we can get some of our residents over to the advanced manufacturing class. And then also $25,000 to Osceola Historical Society. Don, what fund was that coming out again? I, I never could remember it. I always say it wrong.
That's the general fund, but it's in their 82 account.
Which is utility?
No, this is, this is their budget for the general fund. You do have the sponsorships in the utility fund, 150,000 flat amount.
That's what it is, okay, thank you.
That's a separate fund, separate amount.
Okay, that was going to be my question, the 150,000 we allocate in October, November?
That's when you guys get your spreadsheets and you allocate that 150.
And the 75,000's on top of that?
That's correct.
No, this is 103, 987 on top of that 125.
I can tell you what those are, hang on a second.
That covers footsteps to brilliance agreement, the Rotary Club spring fling, Help Now, School District of Osceola Education Award, Kissimmee Valley Livestock Show and Fair, Bahia Shrine Circus, Community Pantry Food Event, Help Now Lobster Fist, Community Vision Scholarship, Osceola County Historical Society, Education Foundation Awards, annual sponsorship, and a golf tournament. Your biggest players there are Help Now at 25K, Community Vision Scholarship at 25K, and Historical at 25K. The rest are under 5,000.
The rest add up to 25 or 30,000?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Where did that direction come from, I guess? Is this just moving it from other spots in the budget where they were before?
Yes, the,
Or is this new?
Those come from different spots in the budget. I moved money around there. Some of this was in my budget last year and I moved it into the council.
But all of them are basically historical precedents.
That's correct.
And we're just trying to put them together.
Oh, okay, all right, I thought it was, these were all new. They're just moving them from other spots.
Well, the, the only thing that's new is the scholarship fund, trying to get some people high-paying jobs at the advanced manufacturing. I think that's a good use of, of, of being a good steward of the money to invest in our people and the community.
And then where was the, and the Historical Society?
The Historical Society, what, have we given, I guess the 25,000 to me seems a little high for the Historic Society. I mean, I don't know how y'all, how y'all feel. I mean, I don't really know, what are we sponsoring with 25,000? I mean, like Help Now, obviously we know what it is, Community Vision, we're going to educate some people, and then Osceola County Historic Society. I love OCHS, I was on the board for many years, so I don't really know, like what's that 25,000?
To help them fund their operations and continue the historic preservation of Osceola County and St. Cloud area. And, and Mayor Hart actually sits on that, so she's actually the head of it. And there's a new executive director.
And most of the work's volunteer.
Right, so.
And they're, they're funded by the county. So I don't know, I would support, I would support reducing that to like $10,000.
Okay.
I don't know how the rest of y'all feel.
I'd like to know where the money goes before we start reducing.
Well, and just, it just seems like some of these items should just be added to that. The 150,000 dollars we allocate per year, just, and it's 225,000 and then it just gets to be a part of the allocation?
No, I think the reason these are broke out like this is because of just the work that's done. Like they can't really program year to year if they don't know, if they're going to get the funding, you know? So I think these are like program-driven, but that's why I'm just not sure what OCHS is. If you could find the details out of that.
Sure, but the consensus is to go ahead and reduce it to 10K?
No, they want to find out what it's for.
We need to find out where the money goes for.
Okay.
I, I think historical preservation is very important for your history, as long as they can document that that's, you know, that's where the money's going, that's where it's spending. I think we would certainly fund that.
What's, because I don't think there's anything in OCHS for the city of St. Cloud.
The Narcoosi stuff and then?
Yeah, but that's not the city.
Yeah, that's not the city, yeah.
They don't work together with us?
We'll get you some details.
Yeah, get some direction on it.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you, Ms. Matheny.
Okay, so just-
Go ahead.
All right. Next one is city clerk. 499,000, 60% of it to personnel services and 40% equating to 331,000 in operating expenses. Any variances hitting that? This account does not, as it does not have anything over the 10K mark. I'll let you kind of look it over if you have any other questions.
No questions, I don't think.
Okay. We did the, yeah, city manager. Personnel services, 67% at 700K, operating expenses at 33% at 347K, and capital outlay at a small, not even equitable, 1,530 or 0.6% capital infrastructure. Variances reported above the 10K, we're going to be talking about, one, professional services at 11,004. This is going to be in relevance to the branding and marketing that will happen with the St. Cloud logo and that includes decalings, shirts, all of that cost. Maintenance cost contract, 77,500. This is an increase due to the Open Gov maintenance contract of it, which will go under the 46 element. Those are the two under, over $10,000. Let me know if you'd like any other additional details on that.
Okay, so we're on page 46?
47, just reviewing your variances over 10,000.
Okay, because I saw on page 46 under salaries and wages, it was, mine showed a delta of 172,000.
Yes, sir.
I just didn't see that.
Yes, sir, and just a caveat, just because of the overview, 3% across the board is going to have increases across all departments that were affected, which the city manager, planning, police were, were the ones affected. It's going to cost that 3%, which includes a FICA increase. The health and dental is going to go across the board, so if you see that, that's why we didn't highlight that, because it was across the board, but we can talk about it.
This went from 154,000 to 327,000.
So the city manager also absorbed, the, the assistant city manager's positions got reallocated under the city manager, so that's why it went in exuberant cost above 3%.
So then we should see a $170,000 reduction somewhere else?
Yes, you're going to see it in the assistant city manager's, but, old budget, yes.
Veronica's saying no behind you.
Could we add a J and R to my, they took me out to make that the PIO budget?
Oh, PIO, yes, ma'am.
And moved me to the city manager, but that's not my salary, that's a whole lot more than my-
Just want to point that out.
Salary and benefits, probably.
I'll give you.
Salary increases in one person, which is the assistant city manager for 32.
And then on the marketing and branding, or rebranding of the city, I just want to make sure, I, I had comments, one council meeting where we talked about it, of just, if we're going to do it, let's, let's lump together all the costs and make a decision on the all-in.
That's correct, we're working on that spreadsheet. I saw the first draft of that today, that spreadsheet that says what's the actual cost of rebranding, not just doing the exercise, but what does it cost a city for all those things?
Right, like to change the letterhead, change-
The logos, the shirts.
I remember when they went to the bacon and fried egg, that there was a lot of cost. You know, it looks like a strip of bacon.
We still call it that.
Yeah.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say what the Open Gov is, the maintenance?
Open Gov is our forward-facing dashboard that we're, actually, we had a little false start. It's going to be a, the citizens and the council can go on, it tells all about our budget in actual, in real time. It's got our strategic plan linked to it and it's something we purchased with 120 fund, but the maintenance, you can't take maintenance out of 120. So it's going to be a forward-facing dashboard. It's called Open Gov, so like our budget will be in there and go down so many levels and look at line items and everything for the public. So this is my effort to try to be more transparent.
I don't know what you mean by open-facing dashboard, I have no idea.
Dashboard, like it'll say, like it'll have like a little speedometer, it'll say, here's our budget, here's our revenue, here's our expenditures, it'll show what those costs are, graphs. It'll show what our strategic plan, how many strategic goals we've met so far, our performance indicators, response times for police, response times for fire, things like that. Public can go in and take a look and drill down into that.
When you say maintenance, is that like somebody inputting that data is what this cost is?
No, that's the annual, that's the annual cost, so the actual annual cost is about 120,000 here. We spread it across different departments, but the majority of it falls under the city manager's office. So actually, our finance department is validating those numbers right now, because it, it comes right out of the AS400 right into real time.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be a great management tool for Bill to be able to run departments, just kind of almost variance reporting of seeing what's, what's going on.
Wendy's been really looking at it hard and it looks really good.
It gives you more detail.
So forward-facing, you can go on there and look at it and say, here's where the city's at, fiscally and strategic plan-wise.
It's a good budget tactic to put that in there, because everybody always thinks, once you deploy a system, we're done. There's maintenance to, there could be beta testing that happens after the fact when they find a glitch or you need an update or you need another portal of communication, because you can have a system where for the AS400 to communicate with Open Gov is one portal. You pay like 5,000 bucks for that. To come back from the Open Gov to AS400, it's another communication line, it's another 10,000 bucks. So a lot of intricate works in deploying that, so it's a good cushion to have spread over that amount of time and then prorating it to other departments versus having, let's say, just the city manager, because it helps absorb the cost a little bit better and help the little guys out.
Well, I think it'll be great, but we just have to make sure that people keep it updated.
And use it, yeah.
Because I know like at my job, there's all this kind of software and no one has time to keep it up and then, then you fall into a whole nother thing, then you're getting hollered out because you don't keep it up and the data's stale and-
I appreciate you saying that, because I went back and looked at that system and I saw where stuff was like four or five years behind.
Absolutely. You get busy, you don't have time, you know?
My commitment would be, if we're going to invest that kind of money, it needs to be kept up. And I think I have the people that are on top of that. Like I said, we're doing the testing right now.
And the beautiful thing about that program also to consider is that it's in, the AS400 uploads in batches every night, so there's nobody that needs to key in, so once the ledger is updated, that information is live. So you can go in there and, let's say, the batch upload is at midnight. Boom, at 12:01, that batch upload number, expenditures, anything posted changes and is live information. And it's very user-friendly, because the AS400, if you've ever seen the old MS-DOS platform or the J.D. Edwards in the private sector, F-15, Shift, F-9, it's very intimidating for people, you know, because it's just that old, you know, black and green screen, you know, like war games back in the day. So, this will give you into a nice Microsoft platform where you'll be able to go like, oh, wow, I know the fund, click. You know, because that's, I don't know.
It's going to have more than just the fun, though, is the thing. You're going to have to have staff type in, oh, we got the South Florida permits, or we're going and putting it out to bid. It's just, you know, that's just the only cautionary thing I'll say is.
I appreciate that.
Just make sure you have the staff that's able to update it.
And to answer your question on salaries and wages, so originally, we had the one position for the Assistant City Manager, and then the additional Special Projects Coordinator, 55,000 adds up to that 119 plus 55,000. So that's two position, and then that rollover cost continues to affect the pension, the healthcare for that special project. So, you know, you're talking about 9, $10,000 a pop for the pensions for that new position. So that's what gave you the 117,000, 112% increase.
172,000, is that what we're talking about?
112% increase, which was 172.8, yes ma'am. Okay, moving forward, we are moving towards the Human Resource tab. That is page commencing 50.
Oh, sorry, I had a question. I didn't hear you go through PIO.
You're right. You want to buy it?
Are there any?
I went through PIO.
Are there any extra costs due to ADA that we would see this year that we didn't see last year, or something coming down the pike?
No, I think we've captured all those costs.
Got it all in, okay.
And we have a strategy to address it. We had somebody doing PDF. I think we're just going to try to put as much stuff actually on the website, which is automatically ADA compliant. And then the documents would have to be requested. So there'll be more information that's ADA compliant. But we had somebody doing, and we spent quite a bit of money trying to get some of the documents, and it's very difficult to get them to comply with the ADA. When you run it through the tester, it's like, it's almost. It's not, we're not the only city or municipality that's having this trouble. It's all over the, I'm reading stuff every day about it. But I think we're good.
Is there any way we can get more information on the website, or is it?
That's what we're doing. We're actually going to actually embed it on the website instead of putting a PDF, like, with a link. It's just going to be, information will be on the website, which will be ADA compliant.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so to answer page 49 for PIO, the Professional Services was a $20,000 increase. This was due to Media Services staff transferring Department Added Marketing Fund increases. That includes Audio and Video Technical Services, Professional Photographer for City Images and Marketing, and Citywide Marketing as a whole for $20,000. So that is what that increase encompasses, just to define it a little bit better for you. And then Operating Supplies, Media Staff is rolling over there to transfer that to that department. I could look at the element and give you a breakout as well. And Element 52 covers things such as still cameras. I'm going to just outline the most significant. Tape, DVDs and CDs, software version renewals, and Sound Forge Magic Box at $3,000. Everything else is under $500. Maybe a camera pack at 900, coming up to the $10,420 increase. Any questions?
Next.
Moving on to Human Resources for real this time. Beginning on page 50, going all the way to your variances located on page 52. Personnel Services taking the big grunt of it, with 5.1 million in Personnel, 217,000 in operating and no capital. Increases here, the only ones we'll identify will be Legal Services at 10,000. This is a 33% increase to cover the increase in litigations against the city.
So I had a question on Legal Services as a whole. I went through and added up all of those Legal Services line items in everyone's budgets. Added up to $108,000 between all departments, plus what we have in there for Dan's department is $176,000. So I just didn't know if more of that should be added on or consolidated into the Legal Department, or if there's someone that we should bring on at some point to cover some of that. Just seems like a lot of money in different buckets instead of just as one legal service.
We did a study a couple of years ago to evaluate what it would cost if we brought on our own in-house attorney rather than paying primarily Manjares and his department the way that we do. And there was just no.
Oh, yeah, I see the bills.
There was no justification for, at that point, for bringing on our own in-house person compared to what it would cost us if we did that. I certainly understand your concern.
I think they're just spreading the fund.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's all you're doing, is just spreading the fund between departments.
No, it's, his 170 plus 108,000.
But what's interesting is, when cities get to be our size, almost the majority of them begin moving into bringing in their own.
In-house, yeah. It would start to hire for specialties, just like on HR side, I mean, they'd have to.
Right.
Hire someone that has special HR litigation, but.
Mr. Bishan has a hearing.
The question is, he wants to know why we're kind of spreading it, why like your department is budgeting for legal services when we have legals actually budgeted in Legal Division. I mean, it's, do you want to answer that?
Well, we actually budget for more than, I think the confusion is the City Attorney, is that what you're talking about? Because the City Attorney, we use the City Attorney for advice, but we actually have legal services for, that go through our vendor, our insurance agents, workers' comp, things like that. So we get legal bills both from, or bills for legal services, both from the City Attorney's Office for the things that they handle specifically for us, which aren't really that many. And then anytime there's litigation, mediations, things like that, whether it's through workers' comp or some other litigation, we have other attorneys through a couple of different companies that provide that.
And who manages those cases? Is it the City Attorney that actually manages that?
He gets briefed, he gets the information. Sometimes they'll do attorney-to-attorney information, you know, meetings or whatever. But generally, it just goes through our office with Joe Eder, our deputy, who handles all of the risk management. And he coordinates with the attorneys that are representing the city. And he's there for the mediations and that type of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So I've noticed on a lot of the budgets, there's this line item called just maintenance contracts, and a lot of them, they've gone down, like in the Clerk's budget, it went down $12,000. You know, in this budget, it's going down, in Human Resources, it's going down $41,000. Like, what does maintenance contract mean? And then in the City Manager budget, it went from 0000 to 77,500, and it has a percent change of 0%.
Because you can't divide by 0. So it's a difference between the previous year and the current year, and you would, cannot divide by 0. So it would always be, the increase would be 0 because it has 0 to, you can't, it's a mathematical.
That's like misleading.
It is.
It should be like, just call it, just call it like 1.
Called GAR.
And then, it's misleading, because if you look down the side, you're like 0%, like, but then I'm like, wait. So what are these maintenance contracts that are all over the place?
Yeah, I definitely understand that. Fortunately, when it comes out, you know, on the green ledger, it'll hit, the mathematical formula will be 0, because it is really 0. It's never 1. It's not a whole, you know, so we can update that maybe. But the reporting, like I said, it's a mathematical equation. It's kind of like when you go to Excel and you have a 0 and then you'll see the division dash 0 error. That's what it's kind of telling you, so.
So what's the 14,000 or the 12,000 or?
Yeah, what are all these maintenance contracts?
Let's look at it. Maintenance contracts for? City Manager, maintenance contracts, Element 46. 50% allocation of Open Gov SOS yearly contract comes out to 77,500.
Okay, so that's your Open Gov.
Yes, ma'am.
So what is the negative $40,000 on?
Human Resources.
HR?
HR, okay.
Okay, you're talking about the 4601 NeoGov? So what happened basically was we had programmed to make purchases for NeoGov, and we didn't make those purchases. So there was $40,000 in the budget that we didn't use for that.
So what's NeoGov versus Open Gov?
I'm sorry, I have a problem with my ears. If you're not in the microphone, I can't hear you. I apologize for that.
What's NeoGov versus Open Gov?
They're two different, they're two different programs. NeoGov is specifically for HR software programs. For example, a couple of years ago, when we initiated our first phase of NeoGov, it had to do with being able to do online applications, and we got rid of doing all the hard copy applications so people could submit their job applications online, much more smooth for both the city as well as applicants. And NeoGov has a lot of different avenues that you can use. And we were programming for part of that and didn't.
Well, I'm glad to know there's someone else at the table who's hard of hearing besides me. So you and I'll talk about that later.
My wife tells me I'm hard of hearing, I understand that.
My wife tells me that ever since we got married. Next. Any other question? Let's move on.
Procurement Department? Thanks, Harvey. That's okay. Personnel Services at 80%, 614K, and operating expenses at 20% of that at 149K, with capital outlay at 2,008. Variances reported on page 54 that hit above the threshold would be salaries, wages and benefits at 109,596. So the explanation of this is pretty straightforward. Before kind of my time come in here, there was, procurement was under the Chart of Accounts for Finance, under the 30 Division. And then they decided to move and change that when that division separated from Finance to another division. So naturally, one was funded, the other one, we had to fund it when it was created under the 40 Division, so it looked like an increase of $109,000, but really it was shifting and removing from one chart of account element to the next one, to a new division, because a new division was created. The Project Manager was also budgeted, and with that account creation, that included the Director position, and it was moved under that 4030. So I believe 3030 was what it was used to, or?
Was 4030, and what was the new one now?
35, yeah. So it's just a change from one division to the next once purchasing moved away from being under Finance.
Any question? Moving on.
Finance Department, 76%, 997K in Personnel and 24% in operating expenses at 311K, with 1,500 in capital outlay. No variances to report at that threshold. I'm just kidding. I'm just sticking, my fingers are sticking here. For 64, okay. As I mentioned before, salaries, health, all going up due to the 3% and 8.5% in those premiums. The next one in the accounting side, 53,009, was due to also the 3% raises. And one funded Accounting Clerk was reclassed from an unfunded position. The balance in that is going to come that we have a temp person, that contracted labor is going to go down now that we have a funded position for the Accounting Clerk.
Any questions?
I just have a general question in regard to salaries and the cost of, 3% cost of living, and the fact that, you know, we have been funding our pay study. Are we confident that we're keeping in pace with our surrounding municipalities that brought us to the position that, you know, we needed to keep up?
Well, my conservative side will say, we're doing the best we can doing this COLA. We would be even further behind. Are we at current market rate where we should be? I don't think so 100% still. We are below mid-grade. So the 3% keeps us at a pace where we can keep up, you know, because some people would say like, man, we just had a pay study, why again, 3%? We would be actually behind, be behind 6%. So no, we are not at current market. We're there, but not quite, you know, so this kind of just keeps us afloat to stay. If we wouldn't do this, we would fall further behind and.
Well, I agree. That's part of my concern.
Yeah, you know.
I don't want to end up on the eight ball.
I mean, I'm saddened to hear your analysis that we're behind the curve when we just did every single thing in the pay study, so I don't know how we're behind the curve. We did every single recommendation in the pay study.
And.
And a COLA.
A 2% COLA. But as I, Scotty Mee's doing a 5%, AOA's doing 3%. I don't know what Osceola County is yet, 3.
3.
So we're just trying to stay. And then the other thing is, I want to point out that we're absorbing a pretty good chunk of the medical insurance this year. I didn't want to give a raise and then take it away with medical insurance costs, so.
And if I can add something, maybe for some clarification to the salary study. You know, when they did the salary study, they come in with a range of, here's where you are according to market. Do you want us to take you all the way to 100% so that you're matching the highest paid people? Or the lowest end? And we opted based on the availability of funding to go somewhere in the middle range. So when we came in, we were actually, if I remember correctly, a little below middle range for the local market. So we, you know, we're in the ballpark, but we're not, we're not even at mid-range, but we're close. We're a lot closer than we were because we were way behind. So it brought us, it brought us back to an area that was acceptable. But if we don't continue to do something, even a little bit at a time, to stay with it, within a couple of years, we'll be right back to where we were before we did the salary study.
Yeah, I don't think anybody wants to do less. I mean, I don't know how they feel. I know you were just kind of expressing the same thing. Like, I mean, did you figure, do you have the calculation for like what, how much more money 4% is, how much more money 5% is?
Yes.
Do you have?
Yeah.
We did do that. And again, you know, my strategy was to use as less of the fund balances we had to, because like I said, we were structurally, I'm sorry, thank you. My strategy was to not only absorb the medical and the dental insurance, but to give a 3% cost of living and then not use as much fund balance. That's why I came back to my directors and said, I need you to cut another million and 25% of your travel to try to get that structural imbalance down. That's what my strategy was.
You know, I just want, I just want us to do our best to keep moving in that direction so we eliminate the revolving door that we tend to have, losing quality people that we've spent time training, investing in, and they're locking in here, then they can go somewhere else. That just needs to be on our radar, and it obviously is, you know, that's a concern I have.
Well, for me, it's like when they say that we have, our general fund went up $1.7 million. Like, I just, you know, maybe some other things need to be cut and give a 5% raise.
I submit to you, let's look at it from a different perspective. Every finance director has a different view. So in a municipality, the first word that always comes up to fix. So in a municipality, the first word that always comes up to fix things is cut. How about revenue performance, right? Think about raising revenue and really, is that at optimal speed right now? Are you really charging for what it costs you to run this business? You need to know that, you know? You need to be firm on that and know that. It's not about just raising rates because we're, obviously, we're not a cash cow here, you know? We're just trying to net zero, that's it. Pay our people, run the city. So I submit to you to kind of have a different vision of that instead of cutting because these guys are going lean, you know? And what happens is, is they go lean and then they have to increase in overtime and they get dinged for that. Well, how are they going to do it? There's no other way. They're going to hire contracted services, there's no other way. However, if we make sure, I can't answer the question right now, if your revenue is at optimal speed right now? I believe it's not. Just my gut. My gut feeling is that you're not trying to gouge the citizens. Don't look at it that way. I'm just saying that if it takes a hundred bucks to run the city, per resident, let's say, okay? Do you really know it takes a hundred bucks? Or what if every time we're, you know, doing a resident, it's costing us a hundred and fifty? We're losing money every time. We need to answer that question and make sure our revenues are performing at those levels, our enterprise funds are doing what they need to do, and then we can do cut because these guys get hit with cuts all the time and it's not going to work for long. We can't absorb health and benefits for long because cash is king. If we don't have cash, we can't do it.
Well, that's why we hired you.
Yeah.
She's rubbing two pennies there, coming up for the dollar.
Help us solve that issue.
Just to prepare, I don't know how it's been presented before to you all. I don't want it to come in as a negative thing, just to open your mind a little bit of, let's give you some data so you have good data to make a decision. You know, I don't want you guys to have to always make the decision of cut because you're trying to help, you know? But you need more information, I feel. That's just me.
Well, I think you have a councilor here that wants to take good care of employees.
Absolutely, and that's half the battle.
And we just want that communicated and certainly strategized.
Absolutely.
Well, to me, it's like, at this point, I'm sure we're not charging for what we need to. Like, if every single department looked at like what we're charging, but we don't really have time to sort that out at this point because we got to approve a budget. So, I mean, I'm not suggesting cut staff or cut their hours. I mean, I'm thinking, there's probably a project in here that could wait a year and then that money could cover the salary adjustment, is what I'm saying. I'm not saying cut from the employees, I'm saying cut, move a project out a year or do something. But I don't really know what that number is to go to four percent or five percent. But I agree with you. I mean, I think all of us on council are like, everybody should be paying for themselves. I think we've all been like beating that drum. So if we're not charging enough, I mean, I would hazard a guess, we would all support raising whatever fees that needed to cover the actual cost of work, but we don't have time to sort that out at this point.
Sure. And we're going to sort it through this period, even though, yes, you know, we've given you a budget that I feel is as consistent as we can with what you have right now, just kind of moving towards the future, I feel that you deserve more information. If it's right, it's right. If we're at where we need to be, but I just want you to feel confident so it's not always the bad, like, you know, the bad message, like, wow, we got to, well, why do you got to raise fees? Well, for these reasons. I want you to be able to say, hey, it costs us a hundred and fifty to get somebody in the seat. You know, I need to pay the bills. That's our fiduciary responsibility is to pay the bills. We're not, last I checked, nobody got a Ferrari off of this thing or anything like that, you know? So I just want to give you that data.
Sure.
You know, because performance is saying that the company is at a good speed. You know, our AP to AR ratio right now is thirty-six percent. Municipality, that means that we're averaging paying our bills in sixty days. Does not happen anywhere else. The average is eighty-two days. So we're doing very well with that, so it's just making sure that we're using every resource possible, you know?
And along with that, if we're talking about any rates on anything, if we benchmark what other communities our size...
Correct.
...are charging for services, we'll see pretty clear, are we efficient or are they more efficient, or how is it working between us and other ratepayers for the same thing?
Absolutely. I mean, if some of the habit has been, we compare ourselves to Osceola County. Good marker, but not same size. That's a big fish compared to us, you know?
Yeah, in a Cooley or Winter Garden.
Correct. I mean, I've talked to Amy at City of Kissimmee, we've been talking now because she's going through this process and she's like, oh, you got a beast because, you know, Kissimmee has a lot more avenue than we do, so we're already kind of cash cow-ing it ahead of you already and, you know, so how do we do that? Because we are getting bigger, but a lot of people are throwing around the growth. Well, what does that mean? What does it mean when you want to give five percent across the board? We should know those numbers upfront. And when we do, you know, it's just sharing that information, you know, readily available to you before you make the strategic decision. So that way you feel good about it, you know, and confident instead of, no, we don't want to raise fees, you know, because I would be nervous too, you know? So that's goal.
Hey, I don't think we should be the cheapest in the neighborhood, which I think a lot of the stuff we are, you know? There's, people are beating down the door to come here, you know?
Absolutely. It's a fine, it's a big balance that we have to do right now. Like, how much do we charge to be with market at the same time to not scare anybody away? Because we want all these big things, the goal is commercial in some avenues, you know, but still keep our residents happy. It's a, it's like a boyfriend that never gives up, you know? But we'll get it there, we'll make him happy, promise.
All right, well, let's move on. Let's move on here.
Here we go. So finance, we're good. Information technology, we're going. Fifty percent is spread almost down the pipe with information technology between personnel and operating. Fifty-two thousand in capital outlay for them. This starts at sixty-five, page sixty-five, and variances can be found on page sixty-eight. Nothing to report above the ten thousand variance.
My only comment on this was, it didn't seem like we spent a lot of money on GIS compared to just other areas of, there's a lot of data and just information we can get out of a good GIS system and mapping out everything and saving time and money in the long run of knowing where things are at in the system, in the ground. So I just didn't know if that was a thought to invest more money into a good GIS team department software.
I haven't had the conversation to answer that, if it's, that's the future plan, but I'm assuming as we roll out new programs, the vision would be to have more data mining and, you know, and grow that department. I'm not sure that there's been a conversation yet as to how to grow that, you know? So we can definitely put that to find out what the plan is for that.
Okay, thank you. And that could be borne across, I think environmental utilities can have the same, you know, sharing that. I'm sure Brian will echo that of a lot of what you guys did at Toho was a lot of GIS too.
Thank you. Yeah, great.
Planning and zoning is the next department with a million two in personnel services, seventy-seven percent, and three hundred and sixty-four K bringing it to twenty-three in operating expenses. Variance is listed on page seventy-one. The first one, of course, is the salaries and wages of COLA and the salary survey to fill a variety of vacant positions. Just to let you know how this looked, mid-year, we were talking about five people in planning with a growth up to thirteen people due to the, just the growth and the need for the city. This kind of trickled on to, of course, FICA and health insurance, which is a given, but also went into memberships and training of books to start, one, following the vision of the city manager to invest in her staff, and two, the cost to take them over to CPM and various classes nationally for accreditation and also recruitment of those individuals, therefore giving you that element twelve increase as well on the salary side.
Anyone else? No.
One of these lines led me to a question. So under professional services, it dropped in half from about four hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. Is this, are professional services generally reoccurring expenses, would be the same thing year over year, and then contracted services would be something that might happen or might not happen?
So your professional services would be something that takes expertise like auditing, you know? So in this case, the reduction came from, the Florida Avenue Greenway master plan was removed in the CIP, which caused a thirty-nine thousand dollar reduction in professional services needed. So that's the only variance I see that brought it down. The other services that are included in that would be like East Lake Toho Area Protection Plan at twenty thousand, the downtown parking studies, so assessments and needs of study are involved in this. Any master plan issues, sustainability plans, all of these are under professional services.
Yeah, so I guess if there are reoccurring expenses that have to happen regardless, like parks and rec, a lot of lawn maintenance and other things that we outsource, happen year over year, just tracking that as, you know, we have to, but then there's studies and some things, and a planning department has a lot of...
Correct, so any...
Updates and studies, just having those in a spot where we know it's in this year, but next year it's not and it doesn't look like a huge...
Correct. If it's not going to be in the following year because needs change, it will be in your professional services. If it's a reoccurring, like you're asking, that will be continual, it'll be in your contracted services reported element.
Okay, so if I'm looking at professional services, it essentially would be zero if we didn't have any new studies or one-off things, so should we have a justification of the hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars?
We do, right? Yes, yes, you're right. I see what your question is leading to. The hundred and ninety-one K is in listener, you're right.
Because it looks like, oh, great, we were going to spend, we spent four hundred thousand last year and now we're only spending two hundred, but really we're spending two hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. Under that methodology, yes, the hundred and ninety-one K, ninety-one K. And the reason is because they reviewed the variances and that was a reduction, but technically I want to give you a hundred and ninety-one what it's coming from. You're right. So we can make that note. It's a change that's going to happen for next year too in the variances is that we'll sit down with department heads because they only go so far and then we can say, oh, you know what, councilman, you know, wanted this, let's add that justification. So we'll do that for next year in the budget process to have that as well. But you're correct, a hundred and ninety-one K is significant enough to share with you, hey, this is the stuff that's happening in professional services this year.
Okay.
Yes. And I'll make a note of that.
Anything else? Okay.
Building maintenance department is next, beginning on page seventy-two. And moving on with the variances reported on page seventy-four. This is an even split with personnel and operating pages, just literally down the pipe. Six hundred and eighty-five K in personnel and six hundred and eighty for operating expenses, which is just an interesting pie graph for us nerds here. To review the variances, professional services hits at twenty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-one. And before I kind of start going through it, let me preface this by having three employee increases in technical services, including comp and software updates. So this is going to just carry this and I'll outline anything you want more in detail. So professional services at twenty-seven thousand two nine one. There was a zone control upgrade assessment needed at City Hall, that's what caused that cost to go up.
And is that like air conditioning, zone control?
Um, let me see if I can...
So just air conditioning?
So we have better control of the air conditioning.
Yeah. So it's not freezing in my office and hot from somebody else.
That is a good one.
That usually pays for itself if you get it done right.
Thirty-one, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Go quick now, you can get a lot done.
Mr. Cooper, you look tired. You've got a busy day, you've been working hard all day.
Oh, yeah.
You're right.
Yep.
Got all those weeds cleared out yet, in the water?
Still.
How much lake funnis do you have?
Seventy-five feet. Quite a bit.
You have a dock? You have a dock?
Hundred fifty feet.
Oh, that's nice.
Built that a year ago.
Okay. No, we're not. We're waiting on you. We have three people here. Y'all need to take a bathroom break real quick? You have my permission to take a bathroom break.
Thank you, sir.
Make it as quick as possible. As soon as you get back, we'll get started. Make it as quick as possible, as soon as you get back, we'll get started.
I'm speed walking.
Off of that, yeah, so we took. If you're looking, so I'm giving you the personnel services and then operating expenditures and then the capital. I'm just trying to give you from the whole budget.
Isn't that amazing? I had to chew him off like a cat, like, get out of my yard.
Itch your bushes up.
It's insane.
Where do you live?
Three of them walking across the rhino. Isn't that something?
I've been going by the.
They pick the shrubbery, they pick, yeah, but they like. All the new stuff.
Money for that? Can you move that up to?
Nathan, you forget the emergency room, they're very.
And then we get the bathrooms in it? But that's, can we move that up to?
Well, I'll see if I can get a trailer.
Yeah.
All right, we're at the police department?
Yes, sir.
Are we ready?
Stinking, one toilet.
Is Mr. Gaunt still awake?
It's full.
There he is.
Twenty cars parked on their, on their property.
Okay, moving to PD. Personnel services at 13,382%. Operating expenses at 2.7 million, 17% and capital outlay at 61,450, which just comes out to 1%. Variances for the police department are located on page 77. Beginning with the top, salaries, 108,468 dollars in increase is a new position. Plus COLA, this doesn't also include union contracts, that cost with it. Element number 14, overtime, 52,217 dollars in increase through the union contract, the new position. An increase of calls for service is deeming some overtime requests. In conjunction with the 3% COLA and salary and wage increase is the FICA, the pension, the health insurance, the dental, the life disability and workers' comp. All respectfully at 67.9, 603,000, 170, and I'm just reading down the rows just to consolidate here. 170,000, 7,300, 2,004, 5,000, workers' comp at 18,006 is all related to the salary increase in those elements. Other contractual services, element 34, 14,400, this is a budget transfer from fiscal year 1819. There was an overall reduction in the account. Next to be affected with the threshold is element 43, under utility services at 10,960 dollars. This was a budget transfer from fiscal year 1819. Forty-five, element 45, insurance, there's a benefit increase which calculates out to 17,497 dollar increase. Maintenance contracts, 80,496. This was due to an increase in radio costs citywide and software maintenance inclusive to that. Element number 52, operating supplies, this was due to 39,722. Increase in equipment, 35, excuse me, replacement computers, Narcan. And I can go through any of these once I read them through for you. Vehicle and fuel, of course, 50, element 52, 45,776. Increase per gallon for the new, for the new position in vehicle fuel. 17,500 increase in training, element 55, is a budget transfer from 1819 and there was an overall reduction in the account. And I can clarify what that means. Element 63, CO improvements, that's 22,000, repair, training, building and facility assessment, fire alarm and install. Questions, comments?
What are the radio costs? I'm just curious.
The radio cost for element 46?
Four thousand dollars.
Chief.
They're expensive, what can I tell you?
I could say, yeah.
The cost is passed on to us through the county. And one portable radio is in excess of $4,000. We use them to the absolute max until they're no longer serviceable, but when they do come in, you know, they're our lifeline and they are an expensive process. And when we do have to make replacements, it gets pricing and that's actually at a reduced cost because the county passes on. We get the purchasing power of their bulk in doing so.
So we're talking about the radios that they actually wear on their uniforms?
Yes, sir.
To do their work?
Police and fire can't use the same.
No, sir, well, they have their own individuals as well and theirs are different because if you notice, theirs are designed specifically for fire, they're heat resistant. And theirs are even more expensive if I call.
I would imagine.
Yeah. If they put ours on, they would literally melt against them, literally, I mean, the difference.
Or get water in them.
Yeah, that and water.
So just buy Motorola stock is what he's saying?
And Motorola has us because they are the sole provider and you can't use another brand because of all of the complexity of that and that's the problem.
Are we getting an increase in, are we on the county's radio system like the actual overall system or are they increasing costs for us?
Just in this arena and some of the technology that's part of it, but it's limited to this scope.
But the actual, not the radios themselves, but the transmission and the antennas and.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes. From what to what, I guess?
That covers the towers, the equipment, personnel, every page, the radio cost, county, you know, animal control, school board, we all pay a certain percentage. And it went up quite a bit this year.
Okay, what was that like, $300,000 and it went to four or I guess what's the?
Around a hundred dollar increase.
Yeah.
Could you please come to my phone, we're going to talk, so people at home can hear.
Good evening. Dave Pearson, police department. Overall, the maintenance fees for radio costs is up at a hundred thousand dollars this year compared to last year.
Is that the maintenance contracts, the 46-01?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
How much is this impacted by the growth that we've had?
It is, but it hasn't been impacted as much as it potentially could because if we had multiple new positions, then we'd be buying even more. And generally speaking, we haven't had that because we only have one new position in this budget.
Okay.
The more airtime we have, the more cost goes up. So if you have more calls for service, more officers in the streets, you have more airtime, would drive the cost up too as well.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I have one. So are some of these costs being covered by the impact fees?
Yeah, impact fees are covered by the new officer position, that one position. Impact fees cover all operational costs, uniforms, radios, vehicles and so forth. Just for that one position.
Right, so like 5202 increase in cost per gallon, comma, new position.
So whatever gas is associated with the new position would.
Well, that's, that's one impact fees, I don't use impact fees for fuel costs.
Yeah.
For that one position, but overall, a price per gallon went up, that's why we have a fuel increase.
Okay.
How prolific is the use of Narcan?
Substantial. And we probably run through multiple doses per month and multiple saves per month. And it's a lot more than you can ever imagine and we, we get them back to the point where the fire department then fully saves their lives. But it's remarkable, it's quite a tool. It's a sad state of affairs when we're having to carry an antidote on every police officer to disperse the people to get them from killing themselves.
Wow. Any other questions? Anything else, Wendy?
No, sir.
Anything else, Chief?
No, sir, thank you.
Dave?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moving to page 79 is the variance for the comm, communications department within PD. The only variance to report is the salary and wages and health insurance, which you have all been aware of, the 3% and the eight and a half percent increase.
Questions? Next.
Page 81 is the variance for EOC. First element is maintenance contracts, 11,005, there's a budget transfer and overall reduction. The 4601 element has calibrations, video surveillance, evidence and evidence maintenance required in those contracts, that's the reason for the increase in that. Operating supplies, replacement of desktop computers, 10,660 in that. And element 64, the CO equipment is 10,200 and increase of facility assessment and fire alarm install created the increase in that element.
All right. Any question? Moving on.
Fire. 8.1, 81% in personnel services, 1.8 in operating expenses, 6,300 in capital outlay.
I think you skipped code enforcement.
I did.
Eighty-four.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Athene is the only one to pass the test. Everybody else fails. And for code enforcement, the increase to hit would be the insurance at 15,076, which you're aware has increased eight and a half percent.
Right.
Now we're moving on to fire. Variances are on page 87. Okay, overtime, element 14 comes in at, in 31,000, this is an increase due to 13 new employees with less than one-year experience. The next element would be 40, travel and per diem, 27,058. The restructure of the fire and EMS budgets add a 6.5 average tenure of department due to retirements. Element 43, utility services, 59,020. All utilities were transferred from the EMS budget to fire and that placed an additional dumpster at logistics. Next item moving would be element 52, operating supplies at 23,127. This is, this is in reference to the new cancer prevention practices and gear, the, and the budget restructure between fire and EMS. The next element 52-16, non-taxable uniform, kind of self-explanatory, at 10,705 increase due to the CBA and expected promotions and new hires from retirement.
Could you explain just a little bit what the cancer prevention gear?
Evening, just specialist fire chief. The cancer prevention is the replacement of hoods and gloves and trying to really be aggressive on the cancer prevention moving forward. So one of the things that we were focusing on is not only the infrastructure of the fire stations when it comes to cancer prevention, but also their PPE.
Okay. Have there been tests that say that wearing this gear contributes to?
Definitely on the hoods and the gloves for sure.
It's interesting because I thought since they keep the, they keep the same gear, wearing the same gear over and over and over and over to every event.
They wash it then?
We do, we, when we go to a structured fire, we have a process that we wash our gear and we have second sets of gear. Not every individual in the fire department has a second set, we're going to look and seek a grant next year to try to do that. So every firefighter has two sets of gear. The goal will be is if they go to a structured fire, once they're done with that structured fire, they shower, they'll get a whole new set of PPE. That other PPE will go get washed and then get stored until the next event.
That's significant, significant issue. Any questions?
Did I miss where we went over 15 double zero, the special pay? Went from 44,000 to 254,000?
Nope. No, you did not miss that, it was not listed there.
I was wondering if that was special events or I don't.
It's the union contract?
Which one? Yes. Oh, yes, the special pay is union contract.
And that, but that's different than salary wages and overtime?
It's the union contract for the paramedic pay, they kind of restructured that and now, and they also increased it. So it used to be part of an hourly.
It was a rank.
Thank you, you guys can speak of that.
This last union contract, we separated it and made paramedic an incentive instead of an actual rank. The being consistent with the rest of the fire service in the central Florida area, so. And in the union contract, we consolidated some of the special fees for extra training that they have and certification, so.
But that would, at least a portion of that, well, I guess, is that the reduction?
Well, one of.
I just figured I would see a reduction somewhere.
So one of the things that I did in this year's budget is really separated EMS and fire. So when I first got here, those two budgets kind of really intertwined. So this year I separated and made sure that EMS was only dealing with EMS. So some of the training and stuff kind of cross-breeded, so I took a lot of stuff out of EMS and put it in the fire department. And so EMS is just anything that deals with EMS is in that budget. Anything else in the fire service or the fire department in totality is in the fireside. So you'll see those reductions and changes in that.
Because really you charge for EMS, so there's a cost for that service and.
Correct.
If you, if you take a, take a ride, you get.
Right, so I'm trying to get clear transparency of what it costs to run the EMS business.
Next.
Public, Public Works, beginning with engineering, streets and traffic.
Maybe, I think you missed one.
Yeah, the EMS.
Ninety.
Page 90.
Excuse me, EMS, yeah. Element 46-01, 34,720. And there's an addition of a new EPCR software and maintenance of current software until new software is operational. So we have a new software coming in and then this cost to maintain the current one is inclusive in this $34,000 increase. Vehicle maintenance in element 4602 is 19,005. Those are based on actuals in 2019 of current charges and repairs. Operating supplies, 18,815 in element 52. Vendor increased pricing on medical supplies, increase in operational costs due to the increase in call volume overall. So a portion of that is of course just cost of due business and the increase of that and then the call volume overall. Those are all the variances reporting above the threshold.
Okay, moving on.
Public Works, beginning on page 91. And first set of variances are on page 92 for public services, civil engineering. Salaries, FICA and health insurance, all due to increase of the 3% across the board, increased wages and increased health insurance cost. This would be your 7010s. This would be your 7010s.
95.
Page 95, public services, streets and drainage. Element 12, increase in wages, again salaries, FICA, health insurance, workers' comp, all conducive to that. And 13,000 in vehicle maintenance, prior year actuals, meaning that the prior actual cost of last year was taken in consideration to project for this current proposed year in order to have vehicle maintenance.
Questions? 97.
Page 97, public services, traffic. Again, salaries, health, workers' comp, all relevant to the wage increase and health increase. And 33,500 in the 52 element, operating supplies. They combined the cost in 46-00, that element, and 5200 accounts. Typically, funding is moved to the gas tax fund.
Okay. Moving on.
Moving on, the next division is parks and wrecks. Park and wrecks, excuse me. Page... Sorry, I'm trying to thumb through it here. Yeah, they put the... Sorry. Page number 110, parks and wreck. First increase to report, element 46, repairs and maintenance, 17,700 increase due to security camera maintenance for the OP Johnson, Goodwin, Chilson and 901 Virginia Avenue parks. 83,200 in the 62 element for the following, Hopkins Park fire alarm install, the Civic Center Gym B, there's a 510 AC unit and heat pump replacement going on there. And also in Civic Center Gym B, a sprinkler system, they're going to do a full retrofit on it. In the recreation, first one to report would be operating supplies at element 52 at 20,657. They're replacing the water fountains with ADA fountains. They need some score clocks for the gyms, table and chair replacements at the St. Cloud Community Center and the St. Cloud Community House. In the aquatic side, I was just kidding with you, there's nothing to report above the $10,000 threshold. Page 111, parks and wreck again for the natural resources, professional services, element 31. This is the Phase 3 of the Tree Survey, the graphic art design and work for marketing, totaling in at a $14,200 increase. Element 34, another contractual, 14,150. This is the sponsorship for the NYE, the New Year's Eve event. 13,100 in the 47 element of printing and binding. Experience Kissimmee grant is the explanation for the 13,100 increase. And no others to report on the variance.
What is the Experience Kissimmee, this binding and printing that you have to do? The grant with Experience Kissimmee?
The money we receive from the Experience Kissimmee grants strictly is earmarked for marketing. That's why it's in the printing and binding.
Okay.
Section.
Any question? You're a busy bee.
Yes, very.
For all you do. Next.
Moving on, we have the economic CRA. Variances are located on page 114. Salaries and wages, additional allocation for the new position, community development coordinator at 10,359. $25,000 increase in professional services, element 31. This is the additional economic studies and marketing for a hotel feasibility study.
Can you, I know it's not on the differential table, but $66,000 for books, pubs, subs and memberships? What is that? I mean, that's usually like $5,000 or...
On CRA?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just trying to find... 54-00?
Andre Anderson, planning and zoning director. For books, pubs and subs, it includes the membership to the chamber for $50,000. It includes Osceola Chamber for another $10,000. The EDC membership for 2,500. International Economic Development Council for $400. International City Management Association, $500. Florida Trust for Historic Preservation, 95. And in a Growth Spotter subscription, $450. Florida City County Government FCCMA for $200. Florida Redevelopment Association membership, $200. International Council of Shopping Centers, $200. And then additional memberships as needed for another $250.
Tell me those big ones in the beginning?
The big ones, yes.
The chamber was $50,000?
Yes.
The St. Cloud Chamber?
Based on membership, yes.
They've been paying that every year.
Every year.
$50,000?
Yes.
$10,000.
I was going to say 11.
Yeah, why is it so much?
So...
Do we have the premium?
This predates me...
I don't even have a parking spot.
Well, this predates me, but how, and unfortunately, Ms. Miller just left. But we were concerned about the different memberships that we're paying. And so, we, Ms. Miller, went ahead and did a survey of all the memberships that we paid to organizations to see how much we pay compared to other cities. And we put together this full detailed spreadsheet. And we have since spoken with the chamber about it to understand better what it is that we're paying for, especially in comparison to the city Kissimmee. And we...
Yeah.
We're still working on that.
I mean, $50,000.
I ain't doing that. I'm sorry.
Is anyone else paying $50,000 to the chamber?
Bill, you go back and ask questions or something. There's something wrong.
That's...
I think, again, I don't know how this started, but I think it's a historical thing that's continued over the years.
Okay, so what were the top ones?
And then the next one is the Kissimmee Osceola Chamber for $10,000.
So, why are we in that? Why are we in the Kissimmee Osceola Chamber?
And that's how much?
10,000.
No, we don't need to be there.
Well, one of the benefits also, I think, to the Kissimmee Osceola Chamber is the Small Business Development Council that's part of that organization that benefits small businesses that want to open in Osceola County. And many of them will open in St. Cloud. And we do refer them to that organization for that.
So, that makes more sense than 50,000, then.
The SDBC coordinator is at St. Cloud Chamber, I think, once a week or twice a week.
Right.
So, that's, I think that's where that funding goes to.
Yeah, I would like to know what we're getting for 50,000.
And at least quarterly updates or something.
We do know what we're getting.
Does anyone else?
I can give you the spreadsheet. We do know what we're getting from that. We asked them for a detailed breakdown, and they provided information about, you know, events and parades or whatever.
We actually met with the executive director of the chamber and saw, we need to see what we're giving you.
Well, and like, does anybody else pay this kind of amount? I can't imagine. Anybody, I mean, I'm thinking like the top-tier membership is what, like $1,000? And then the city's paying 50,000?
Well, it's not fair of that Dave here, because I know he spends a lot of time with chamber and all that.
Well, I'm not making any decision. I'm just asking, like, that's just shocking amount.
I'm sure Dave would be able to explain a little more about what some of this goes into.
Now, do we pay the chamber for the fireworks? Do we give the money towards the fireworks?
Great question.
No, we buy the fireworks.
We buy it.
We buy?
We buy the fireworks.
Plus, we give a sponsorship.
I think it's more than that.
Plus, we, all the costs included in the fire, the police coverage and everything.
So, why, is it a chamber event, then?
That was one of the questions that we raised.
That was what we asked. We just met with him. He's just took over.
It's always been.
So, how much are the fireworks?
25,000.
Okay.
And they've requested a $12,000 sponsorship this year?
Where could you get an answer? Like a leadership? We just started meeting last week.
That's partially why I like to kind of vote on some of these things every year of, did you get your benefit out of it, and you up it or decrease?
Well, and I think, too, the way that we see the budget, you know, we're not going to know how the sausage is made necessarily. Like, that's kind of the stuff I'm hoping you'll bring forward to us, like, hey, do we want to reevaluate this expenditure? Because we're not going to know, I mean, you guys are the experts on...
That would be one, definitely, all these.
50,000?
Well, and some of these are, you know, all the departments have to cut their budget by $50,000 to put that money into that organization.
If I may...
Every other second or third week.
Well, I think the consensus here is that you certainly investigate and bring us back where our money's going and why it's so much. And the fireworks thing.
Kissimmee's 10,000, that's...
It's interesting.
Yeah, I want to know, too, like, who else is paying this 50,000, you know? Like, that just...
They're not. I mean, we received a P and L from the new CEO. And last year, they requested an $8,000 sponsorship from the city, which they were given. This year, they're requesting a $12,000 sponsorship, plus the cost of fireworks, plus the overhead cost that is not included in their budget, which is, you know, the manpower we put out there, which is, you know, the coverage, the police coverage. They don't pay us for that, and that's a big ticket. So, we were just kind of, just met with them to get an idea of that, because, you know...
Do they do the parade? Or do we sponsor all that, too? The Christmas parade?
That's one of their events. And he's, the CEO is cleaning everything up right now to give us a list of all these events. But it's a big bill to fork. I mean, it just, you know...
We actually looked at it the other day, and I told Veronica and Wendy, I said, we could take over these events and save a lot of money. Oh, a lot of money, yeah.
Well, you're paying for them already. You're paying for them anyways.
Put it into the...
Yeah.
And there's revenue that's made that doesn't come...
I have to credit.
What revenue is made?
Well, that was my question when I saw the P and L, because they were, you know, net income positive. So, I'm like, okay, so you got 16K left over. Do we get a share? Like, give us back our sp... You know, and that was not in the equation, because they were, you know... So, it's a lot of money. I mean, it would be easier to say, hey, we're going to take care of the cost for you to do your event. Okay, fine, that's a way we're helping, but we're asked to also sponsor and, you know, kind of diamond status sponsorship. And last year, my understanding was we gave that funding, and we weren't even mentioned or given credit as being a sponsor. Just kind of FYI.
No, it comes as like a chamber event, for sure.
But they recognized all the other businesses.
Entail with their...
What they get for that 10,000?
Only with the county or the city of Kissimmee, with the chamber, what do they spend? Consider what we're spending? I bet you, three to one.
Are you saying the, what they spend on sponsorship, or what they spend?
He said he'd like to get a comparison.
Okay, yeah, I understand. So, their membership is $11,000.
I want to know how much Kissimmee, everything that they've got to use with the chambers.
And they probably do sponsorship in addition to that.
And that's kind of comparison on something. And can you all give us something in writing?
Yes.
All the council members can see?
Yes.
Money for money?
Anytime you had all the police coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything that we do versus what Kissimmee is paying. Give me a comparison, if you could do A to B.
So, when you guys do your whole breakdown of like what we donate in services, you know how you had done that number, and it, I think it came up to like, was it 44,000 or 160,000 or something?
No, it was more like 475,000.
So, are you including in that number the stuff to the fireworks? Or do you look at that in a separate bucket?
We looked at the sponsorships. That's in a separate bucket, which is the fireworks. And what goes to the chambers is a separate bucket. What we looked at was services that we provide and sponsorships together.
But it did or did not include the fireworks? So, see, like, those numbers are going to be...
Skewed.
Yeah.
And it doesn't include police coverage, fire coverage?
No, it's getting up there.
That's what I'm saying, if he didn't, you know, it was a big number of what we gave away, and then...
Are we going to move on, or I'm going to leave?
I'm ready.
Because nine o'clock, I'm done.
Well...
I'm walking. It's all right.
You heard our concerns about that until the rest of the day.
And if you have any other little gems like that tucked away that we're not aware of, if you could kind of point those out.
Okay. So, what do you have next?
So, we're done with all the departmental at this point, and we're moving to the water utilities fund.
Thank you, Andre, sir. Do we have any additional comments you wanted to do?
Okay, here we go. Variances for utility water, 57,973 in salary.
Were you at?
Uh, sorry, page 119.
119.
57,973 in salaries, 44,150 in other contractual. These added costs were associated with the CIS version four utility billing upgrade. Third-party electronic services for credit checks and payment processing have increased due to growth. Maintenance contracts, element 46, 12,112 annual contract increase for ASU and LINK software.
So, that 4601, the maintenance contracts, is $120,000? So, that's all like software?
All LINK, ASU and LINK software, yes.
$120,000?
I'm pretty sure that is right up the alley, yeah. Let me pull it here.
And I don't know what, whatever those two words you just said are, LINK and ASU or whatever.
Good evening, Kevin Fowling, I'm from Public Services Administrator. Basically, it's our billing software that we use for the utility. Like I said, it's just the software we use for all the billing that we share.
That's the new stuff that we're getting?
No, this is existing contracts we have. This is for the maintenance of all the software we have. Yes, sir.
Is this budget all covered by the water fund?
Yes.
Okay.
And to answer your question, they also added additional notes for that CIS and LINK. It's a 1.5% increase every year. And for the LINK, it's a 3.5% increase every year in that maintenance contract.
Next.
Page 122. Salaries, oh, everybody there? Salaries, wages, overtime, FICA, health insurance, all due to the increase in wages, 43,541 in the salaries and wages category. 48,500 in utility services, element 43, based on prior year actuals that they actually incurred. And 145,000 in repairs and maintenance, element 46, in prior year actuals. 112,566 is the allocated administrative charges to element 49, inputted by the finance department based on the prorated rates already calculated for them. They do not input this. This is just what they absorb. And 89,190 in element 52 is the projected increase on flows based on prior year actuals.
Bill, are these all the costs, you know, with the past year or two, there've been all the issues that we've been working through with the water system?
Correct. So...
Everything we need to keep it running?
Once the operational assessment occurred for optimization, we started seeing that we needed more preventive maintenance. And then the new superintendent identified things that need to be replaced. And that's where you see that some of this increase.
But is this good to go for the next couple of years moving forward of this is what we feel it's going to cost to run that system? We haven't seen any big swings?
No, because I said, we have a better handle on resin loss and all those different issues that we had a big swing with. We feel that we should be able to operate, that this is more, it'll be more flat-lined in the future. I mean, obviously, as flows go up, there will be additional cost. But there shouldn't be any spikes that we've seen over the past year, so...
So, yeah, if you guys are looking at adjusting rates or anything, just making sure that this is where it's at, and we don't have...
Yeah, we were spitting a fortune on resin. Okay.
Page number one twenty-four, water lines. Salaries, overtime and FICA, forty-one thousand three hundred and seventy due to the COLA increase. The twenty-one thousand six hundred and ninety increase in overtime, hourly cost increases, quantity of after-hour reconnection of services, and the greater demand to locate requests through the Sunshine Eight-Eleven has increased the need for overtime. FICA at eighteen thousand three oh four. Health insurance, twenty-six thousand five, as we've talked before. And those are all the elements hitting the thresholds.
Um, so, if, if we're looking at rates, I just want to make sure that we're charging appropriately for the after-hour reconnection? Like, if you have to two-hour minimum, you know?
There, there, there is a charge, that the, that people ask for them to come on after-hours, that they are, they, they do pay a charge to be able to cover the costs, yes, sir?
Page number one twenty-seven, the administration of public services. We have salaries at fifteen thousand two ninety-three, increased by the COLA. Health insurance comes in at ten thousand two oh nine. And maintenance contracts, thirty-nine thousand nine hundred. Moved from My Meter Software from the thirty-four element and included allocation for OpenGov and software per the city manager. In layman's terms, we took one, coded it to another line item, and also allocated the cost for OpenGov per the CM's direction in order to spread the cost to all divisions using the OpenGov software.
That's good.
The following one is the sewer utilities. Starting at page one thirty-two, variances are reported on one thirty-four. Salary and wages, I'm sorry, I'll wait till you get there, sorry about that, see people flipping. Sorry about that. Um, element twelve, eighteen thousand one hundred and eighty-two in wages. Seventeen thousand four sixty-four in overtime. Element thirty-four, other contractual services, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight. There was a hundred and fifty K added for the aeration basin, sand and sludge removal, that added seventy-eight thousand dollars to reflect actual tons of sludge produced. From previous discussions, it's just to kind of clarify this, there's a great expertise in order to get sludge removal, which is above my head, but a hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight, make sure that we get that done correctly for the tonnage that we do have. Um, and it was just quite, you know, enlightening last time we had this conversation. Sixty-five thousand goes to element forty-three in utility services, and that is actually to reflect the actual usages that happened in twenty eighteen. Ten thousand nine fifty-six is an increase to the insurance cost in element forty-five. And forty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-five goes to repairs and maintenance, thirty K of that for roof repairs and eight K for the RAS and WASAS motor replacements. Finally, element forty-nine allocated the admin charges at sixty-one thousand, that is done in finance for the division.
So, on the aeration basin sand sludge removal, is that a capital improvement or is that...
No, uh, the, the plant, since it's been open, um, we've been trying, we've been, uh, we have two aeration basins for, for, for the process, and we've been swapping them over and, and doing some, some clean on them, but we have not got them completely clean. This is to actually basically remove all the sludge that, that's accumulated over the past ten years, uh, in there. So, I said, so, um, as the flows are going up, we're actually having to start using both aeration basins consistently by, by, by there, by itself, just because of the, the increased flows. And so, I said, so, the, the, so, we're, we're going to do one last clean and get it completely clean, get back to its original, uh, its original volume before we start using both sides continuously. And so, this is actually how the company will come in and be able to do this. If not, we'd have to, uh, basically have our guys go out there with buckets and shovels and have to do that all by hand. And so, this is a more efficient way of getting it cleaned up.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Page number one thirty-six, sewer lines. Wages in sal- salaries and wages, eleven thousand three nine six, increased due to COLA, as well as overtime, fourteen thousand six. FICA increasing at twelve thousand seventy. And element forty-six, repairs and maintenance, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight. Lift station repairs to include odor control, check valves and pump repair. And the allocated admin charges to sewer lines for one hundred and ninety-four thousand one fifty-two, based by and done by finance.
On the lift station replacement, is that one, two, three? What, how many are you guys upgrading?
Uh, I, I don't know the exact number. I just know that there, there's multiple ones they're adding. We're trying to be good neighbors. Um, like I said, we, we've just had a lot of complaints recently with, uh, with people living next to lift stations. The, the sort of smell's starting to bother them. So, I, I don't know the exact number. I can get that for you, um, for, uh, for the next time we meet.
Yeah, thanks.
Any questions? Who's next?
Page one thirty-nine, public services administration. Health insurance, fifteen thousand two six seven. Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars increase in element forty-six for maintenance contracts, which includes the My Meter Software, moving from element thirty-four and including the allocation to OpenGov. Those are all the variances to report above ten thousand.
Question? Do we have a basic total of what the OpenGov is costing us?
One fifty thousand?
Yeah. We have a fourteen thousand dollar credit coming.
All right, that's good enough. Next?
Sanitation. Variances are on page one forty-eight. First one for collections. Overtime at thirty-one thousand five twenty-eight. Growth due to residential and commercial right routes increasing. Thirty-six thousand two eighty-five, element thirty-four, other contractual service. This is an increase in cost of tipping fees due to growth. Thirty-one thousand in vehicle maintenance, element forty-six, increase in the maintenance cost to the older fleet. And fifty, element fifty-two, vehicle fuel, six thousand three hundred and fifty dollar increase. That is the cost of diesel going up. Landfill, salaries and wages, a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven fifty, increased in wages, growth due to residential and commercial route. In conjunction, overtime at fifteen thousand two sixty, there's additional hours and staff, of staff, they're working in the yard. Drive times to Republic and Lakeland for recyclables. Uh, eleven thousand seventy-nine in FICA. Health insurance of fifty-one thousand eight. Other contractual services, element thirty-four, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, increase in cost of tipping fees due to the growth. And finally, maintenance contracts, element forty-six, nine thousand two six nine, due to the new software.
Wow.
So, I brought this up several meetings ago about why don't we have impact fees for trash? And, um, you know, here we go. We've got all these things here that are increased due to growth. I know that, um, Keith was able to find in the meeting other examples of communities that did have it, so it's not a crazy wild idea, so other people have it. But, you know, it's, it all came up and we had, um, was, I think it was Tohokah when, um, we were told in our agenda review, I think incorrectly, that we were going to have to buy new, um, trash trucks to like run down the alleys. And so, I'm like, why should the city pay for that? I mean, if we have to buy a new trash truck because of this development, I don't think the city should have to pay for it. So, I mean, this kind of is back up to that.
This, this is where, two months ago, I came back, concurrency. Where are we at with concurrency?
Actually, it wasn't two months ago. And we've talked about concurrency. So, um, it's on the August eighth meeting discussion with the county for concurrency. They want to tie that in with renegotiating the JPA. So, I did take it forward as you guys requested. But if I could just take a second, Ms. Pathini. Uh, in that study that we put forward several weeks ago from solid waste, it does include an impact fee for...
Okay.
The garbage trucks and the garbage cans and everything, so we did...
Perfect. That's what I was just saying, I mean, right here is a black and white, like, black and white, here it is.
I can go back to Mr. Cooper, so, you know, council gave direction to look at concurrency, but it is in our, currently in our code for the city, but the roads we were talking about were, were county roads. So, we have to negotiate with them, have an analytical agreement.
They look like they're going to work with us.
They said we could discuss it.
Well, and at the, at the, there was a county strategic planning meeting today, and I was there, and at the, at the end, they talked about some coordination with other governments, and, uh, one of them was making sure that the city doesn't do the ISBA that we've been talking about, because it just disjointed annexation. So, just wanted to point to them.
As the city manager, I agree with that. I think that it should be coordinated, annexation should be in a systematic fashion. You know, we should close the enclaves first and then start a systematic, where do we want to grow or slow the growth or whatever?
Yeah, I don't know how we can just have gone and done all this annexing with the argument that we needed to ratify our borders and consistency of service and all that, and then just start going ding 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 ding, all over the place. But can you tell me on the other contractual services? It's one point seven million dollars. I know it doesn't have much of an increase, but what falls into that other contractual service?
Are you at what page you're on, man?
One forty-four.
Thank you.
On the collection.
Thirty-four zero zero?
Is it seventy seventy-two?
Seventy seventy-one.
Seventy-one, I'm on page one forty-four.
It says four four zero seven seven one five three four three four zero zero.
Sorry, we just flipped in between two books. Yeah, seven seventy-one, five thirty-four.
Oops.
That's why I sneezed, ripped her pants.
It's getting late.
Contractual services has the TRSF station.
Yeah, it, it, it's just for the transfer station. It, 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 it's caused, the majority of it is cost for, cost for disposal. Um, like I said, uh, right there. Um, we have about twenty-eight thousand tons of different kinds of disposal there, um, and that, that, that runs about one point two million dollars. Um, the yard waste disposal is about two hundred thousand dollars, uh, between the yard waste and the brush. And then we have little things like the clam, clam truck roll-off and recycling. Uh, those add up to about another, uh, three hundred thousand dollars for the, the one point seven million dollars.
Okey dokey.
So, be- between, uh, collection and transfer station, are we making sure that, just like with fire and EMS, all things are completely separate?
Yes, sir, like, that, that's the difference between the seventy seventy-one and the seventy seventy-two. That, that, like I said, one's, one's landfill and one's, uh, the, uh...
But all, all equipment, capital, every, uh, everything's separate? So, where we can look at true rates for the transfer station and does it make sense?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and then, like I said, and then to let you guys know, we brought up about the, the impact fees. I actually have a proposal to be able to, for, for the impact fee study. Uh, I have received that on Friday, so we're, we're hoping to be able to bring that forward, start that moving forward.
Are we done?
Yep.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Page number one fifty-three. Uh, salaries, health insurance, eighteen thousand fourteen and twenty thousand two 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 for salaries and health insurance. Ten thousand three hundred and twenty-one is the allocation from finance. And three hundred and eighty-four thousand eighty-four is increased due to a CCTV truck addition under machinery and equipment.
What are...
There, there's also a jetpack in there also.
Oh, yeah, what are we, how much are we paying?
A jetpack? Can I get that?
A jetpack, a jetpack. If it was a jetpack, it'd probably be more than three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But, like I said, but i- it is a jetpack, and then we are trying to be able to have, uh, we, we currently do not have any way to be able to inspect our, our, um, our, um, pipes. And so, like I said, so that, that is something, why we're looking to be able to get closed caption TV. Um, we do have a, we have one of those for, um, the, the utilities, but it goes through sanit-, it goes through sewer lines. And so, we didn't want to have cross contamination between our, our, our stormwater and our sewer lines. And plus, you also have to have a different kind of, uh, camera truck to be able to get down, uh, stormwater pipes.
How much do we, so we don't currently inspect them? Like, we don't, it's not like we were paying three hundred thousand dollars a year in services to inspect it, and now we'll have the truck and do it ourselves?
We, we, we do, like I said, we, we actually pay, like I said, we don't pay three hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, we, we do some, do inspection, we do, actually, we have, uh, because we, we have a budget for, uh, plugging pipes, um, being able to have, have scuba divers be able to go down and, and, and do some. So, there, there is some inspection down there, but it's mostly, uh, manual inspection as opposed to actually having videotaping. Um, and so, like I said, it, it, it's not something that we, i- it's, it's a program that we are trying to be able to do since we do have agent infrastructure, and we are trying to be able to have a better understanding of, of our, um, our assets.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know if it would cost, just if we had a service come out and just do the whole system, if it would cost that much or if, you know?
Typically, like I said, it's between eighty cents and a dollar a foot. Um, and so, like I said, so, it, it adds up pretty quick, because I think we have over a hundred miles of pipe right now. Something that fall apart.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Building permits.
Building permits. Uh, variance is located on page one fifty-nine. Overtime thirteen thousand. Increase in staff, including one building inspector and one building code enforcement officer, will carry us through FICA pension, health, dental disability. Um, FICA coming in at thirty-eight thousand five five two. Pension at forty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-five. Health insurance at eighty-eight thousand six ten. Moving down to element forty-six oh one, maintenance contracts, sixty-six thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars in a new IVR support cost to include a Spanish option. Twelve thousand eight hundred forty, element forty-six, is an increase in department vehicles in need to, the replacement of tires on six vehicles, coming in at twelve thousand eight. Seventy-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-five under element forty-nine, death sixty-nine is just the allocated admin charges from, uh, transaction counts and, and, um, department budgets and transaction counts for POs. Eleven thousand eight hundred is element fifty-two oh two for vehicle fuel, is increase in workload and additional vehicles causing the need for more fuel. Thirteen thousand seven in, under element fifty-four, books, publications, subscriptions and memberships is a new co-changes and additional memberships needed for the floodplain manager and architect. Forty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollar increase in element fifty-five in training, additional testing and training for new and current staff. And in the sixty-four element, machinery and equipment, eighty thousand three hundred and thirty-four is additional vehicles needed for added staff and workload. The training spread that you're looking for or looking at includes seven new employees. Um, comparison between the new hires versus now and training that's happening. Year over year, they've had an eight percent to seven percent increase in salary with the add-on, with the growth that's needed. So, they've been pretty consistent, just so you know, some additional information of that.
I have a couple of questions. Um, what's the hundred and nine thousand dollars for repairs and maintenance? We have, they have a hundred and nine for repairs and maintenance and then ninety-four for maintenance contracts, which you said what the maintenance contracts were, but...
Numbers, tell me.
Uh, forty-six? No, forty-six zero zero, it's a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Okay. Let me get you some details on that right now. Come on, forty-sixty, and she wants, okay. Yes.
Can we just roll them in again?
Forty-six. Forty-six even, okay.
Not on her very sheet, sorry.
That's okay. Okay. Um, element number forty-six, repairs and maintenance includes a lightning upgrade for forty-five hundred dollars. Catastrophic failure of camera and door equipment at ten thousand dollars and a building department reconfiguration at ninety-four thousand five hundred, giving you a total of one hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Okay, and then, I, I know you've probably explained this along the way, but I'm, I'm still not sure. The allocated admin charges, what, what does that mean?
So, um, the enterprise funds have to pay, um, the general fund really, um, back. They're just little businesses, so they're out there, little factories. So, it's a cost to do business, they got to pay us back. And that's, it's based on a percentage, you know, kind of a square footage, let's say.
Okay.
We base it, and they got to pay that. So, that's a, a due to from another business to the general fund.
Okay, and the fifty-five thousand for training? I know that's in your...
Fifty-five thousand for train...
Variances.
Yes, and fifty-five thousand, uh, for training was keeping in, in alignment that they got all these new positions and they were getting into CPM, getting the certifications that the architects, building inspectors needed, as well as some incentives to bring people over and get them certified. And they're trying to do it in phases, just they had a, a group of employees that they've just onboarded, and they're trying to break it out through the current year, as well as the new proposed year, and the majority went to the proposed... as well as the new proposed year, and the majority went to the proposed year.
Anything else?
And then I had a question during my agenda review for last week's meeting about, there was a couple of house bills that went through this year that specifically referred to building departments. I didn't know if any of those affected our budget. Four-four-seven was one that you couldn't have more than a certain amount in reserve for the building department, or whatever. I just didn't know if any of those affected us.
Bob Deathridge, building department director, uh, that was more, the house bills that went through were more about the budget carryover, as well as refunds if the builder decided to use a private provider. So, we've covered that and the recent fee schedule amendment that you all passed at the last council meeting.
Yeah, okay, and the carryover were, I think it was like four years' worth, I don't think we're closed, I just want to make sure that...
Right, we were, we've got that under control.
Anything else? Any other questions? Moving on.
Yes, sir. Vehicle maintenance. Variance is reported on page 164. Salaries and wages at 10,277. Health insurance at 15,867. Again, allocation from the finance department at 15,600. And that is all the variances reported, 10,000 and above.
Moving on.
Self-insurance. Five percent increase cost element thirty-one, medical care physicals to go to 212,876. This is an increase to cover several of the high-cost claims that are predicted for the upcoming year. And capital equipment item element sixty-four, 15,500, the sprinkler system retrofit and fire alarm system install as a result of the facility assessment.
Do, do we hold a contingency, just in, in case this year we get even more? Where, where is that shown?
It's on page 167. It says restricted. I'm gonna write page one.
Mm-hmm, 167, um...
There's a contingency there, it just says restricted.
Contingency is another 120, well, 167 for the budget, this one is 122,550.
Oh, yeah, and for the medical insurance, on page 165. The workers' comp is the 167, there are two different finances there.
So, we're holding a 157,000 dollars of contingency for a 5.3 million dollar yearly spend?
Yep.
That doesn't, that doesn't seem like a lot.
Well, a lot of it, we sat with the actuaries and got actual claims, you know, currently what we're projecting, we base it on what actually is due, um, to hit, so that's the best estimates on their expertise, you know? We have a positive balance as well, so...
And we also carry reinsurance, we get to a certain threshold that, that reinsurance would kick in to protect us.
Till that hits the cap, and then you...
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right.
I only have, um, more capital purchases, because the other schedules are just informative, just department counts on how many funded positions, which we went over, so, capital. Those other elements that you see, so you don't think I'm skipping something, is just the outline of everything I've talked about, the positions, what are they, what departments they went to, which is the five positions we reported. So, moving to capital.
Hang in there, Ms. Cooper, we're almost done.
You're doing good.
Yeah.
Each of the items in capital has been outlined for you by department and also by the fund paying for it. So, as you can see in information technology, uh, there's a variety of them, and I can go through them with you. Two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand five under the 1% fund for information technology, covering things from a network switch to storage, uh, security information, fiber, network, Microsoft Exchange version upgrades, and in conjunction with the IT master plan, citywide UPS replacements, EOC, Seventeenth Street Distribution Homes, and the City Hall kiosk replacement. So, let me know if, that's how, I'm just gonna go down them, if you want me to stop, let me know. The building maintenance department has 100,000 for the City Hall roof replacement. This includes solar panels for 50,000. Replacement of the vehicle for maintenance at 27,000, and a new vehicle in the form of a van for maintenance at 27,000. The police department brings in ten patrol vehicles with emergency light equipment. That includes cage, gun racks, graphics, radars, all at 481,000. Two motorcycles with one trade, 46,000. Twelve police radios at 4,200 apiece with a grand total of 15,000, 50,400. A UAV, 8,000. Two admin vehicles with emergency lights, 78,000. A new full-time position includes one evidence vehicle at 44,800. Twenty-one thousand three fifty for a new alternate light source for forensics, and new SWAT vest rifles, TASER replacements, and AED replacements coming in at 8,38,08,0750, 20,000 and 20,400. Communications, a MCC 75 dispatch console, 85,000. And in code enforcement, a vehicle with emergency light graphics at 35, 30, excuse me, 34,500. Continuing on in the fire department, traffic control canoe creek, 306, this is an opticom, traffic control canoe creek and fires, 360,000. A site to secure to install security cameras, 72K. Award DSL filters, two engineering, one spare engineering, and one TWR, 48,000. Finish and design the template for future fire stations, 80,000. Universal generator, exterior facility hookup, 67-5, as well as additional portable radios, 67-5, and training props for the training center, 150,000 dollars. In emergency, the emergen...
On fire department?
Yeah, sure.
In the future, when we do fire station placement, can we put them to where we don't need to add a traffic signal later? Or the traffic signal's already there, you know, just buy the property, get the property...
Line it up.
Okay.
I just want to know where Canoe Creek is.
Canoe?
Canoe.
It's one street over from Canoe.
Oh, okay.
It's Canoe's brother. EMS, emergency medical services, a purchase of a new rescue, or, excuse me, new rescue with power load and DSL system, 325K. Refurbishments of the RMT R-23-14 with power load and DSL system, 275,000. Ward diesel filters at 60,000. New AEDs, gym, admin, logs, inspector, and admin vehicle, 14,950. Stretcher power for spade used on rescues, 23,000. In traffic control, a new F-150...
I have a question, sorry.
Yes.
The number one, purchase new rescue, so that can't come out of, um, impact fees? That number one, it says purchase new rescue with power load DSL system.
It will probably come out of there.
Because you've got it in the 1% fund.
If it is new and it's not replacing something else, then yes, well, we will move it if that, if that's the case.
And then, number four, new AED, I don't really know what all the acronyms are, but, I mean, any of the stuff that could go into the impact fees?
No, those are mostly just re, they're new for the gyms, they're probably replacing them.
Replacement.
Yeah, they're, they're calling them new, but even if they're in like admin vehicles and things like that, we don't use the impact fees for that type of equipment. We usually only use impact fees if we're actually adding capacity with a new fire in his gear. A new rescue, absolutely.
Is it written like that, or that's the interpretation that the city has?
I believe the code is written like that for the impact fee. It says equipment and...
And is that written by us?
No.
No.
Okay.
Turf and landscaping, mower, 10,005, NF-250 pickup, 35,000. Mowing trailer, 10,000, and stand-up riding mower at 8,000. Parks and rec, resurface seal and strip, and sh...
Right.
That's a strip. That's a strip at tennis courts at, uh, Butter Park, 13,000. Peghorn splash and pad UV system, phase two out of three, that's 50,000. Mower, 60-inch at the cemetery, that's 10,500. Ford F-250 pickup to replace seven, uh, that seventeen dash one-three-three is your asset number at two, uh, the 2007 model is 40,000. The Tommy gate for the new cemetery truck, 3,500. Gym wall matting for gym A, 20,000. Replace the wood flooring with tile, 40,000. Mic projector and other accessories, 35, and the DJI Mavic drone with extra batteries at 3,000.
So, all the improvements to the skate park have already been funded, Bill?
Yes.
So, my overarching question comment on the 1% fund is, this likely will sunset in 2024, is that what it is? Isn't this the penny that sunsets?
No.
Or this is the, this is the sixth penny, not the seventh penny?
No, it does sunset, I, I think it's 2035 or 2025, I can't remember. I can look it up.
It's 2020 something.
Have it on my desk, yeah, then it's 2025.
2025, okay, so...
The county will have to take it back, if we want to continue.
And I've heard that they are not looking forward to taking it back, so, I just want to make sure that we're planning that this money goes away at some point, so we just need to make sure that we're planning for that 7 million dollars a year that might go away.
Yeah, the revenue this year is 5.5 million dollars, that's about what we've been getting the last couple of years.
Did I hear 60-inch mower for, out of the...
Yes.
Yes, sir, 60-inch mower at the cemetery, yes, sir.
Isn't that kind of a big one, for, here at the cemetery?
I would assume so, sir, 60 inches is kind of wide, but, uh, that's a big cemetery.
Are we sure we need a big one, that big? A 60-inch instead of a 52, or, I mean, that would be big.
No, that, this is a replacement, so they've been using a 60-inch out there. That's what they need to, um, perform the work, not have to make as many passes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, should she give you the technical spacing between the headstones?
No, the headstones are a lot closer than that, I can tell you, I've been out there. You haven't been out there, it's a lot closer than 60-inch.
Well, like, from a headstone to the foot, so you got...
How are you mowing in between the headstones? They're, they're closer than that.
No, well, not, not necessarily, not from headstone to headstone, because you headstone and then...
Okay. So, they're mowing, they're mowing that on, okay.
Anything else?
And that is the last capital project for, for the day. Ah, two pages, all right, two little pages.
You don't have to read everything for me.
Yeah.
I mean, just...
Sorry, it's a whole new rookie thing, so I don't know, so I just figure if I read, you guys will let me know, stop reading.
Are there any areas on the capital projects that you, anyone here would like to address?
The only question I have is, oh, sorry, did you have something? The only question I have was, I don't see on here, um, anything about the council chambers. I thought we were refreshing the council chambers. Was that just hidden inside of something that I couldn't see?
That's in this year's budget, we're working on that right now.
Bob Deathridge, maintenance director, uh, that, yes, that, uh, Diaz has been redesigned and will come out of this year's budget.
And it's, it's not in capital, it's inside of the...
Um, not exactly sure.
It's out of the building fund.
Yeah, yeah.
But this year, correct? This year, ma'am, not the...
Oh, the current?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's out of the current year.
Okay.
Current, current budget.
Right, and it also has, uh, security enhancements back there too, so...
Okay, so on water and sewer funds, we have two, three, 400,000 for master plan updates on water reclaim and sewer. Is that looking at, you know, impact fees, but then also rate study and making connections? I guess what, what's the intent of the master plan updates?
The intent is, uh, right now, the master plan is set up basically to look at developers maybe paying, paying the way for improvements, and we've run into some different pressure issues, and different issues out in the field because of that. So, we're gonna have to go back and, and look at the, at a holistic area and be able to see what the utility should be funding, be able to help with some of our, our different areas. Um, and then it's also, there, there, there's just, uh, just, just general planning also, like I said, it's really, like I said, i- i- they said, um, that we, I, I really hope we wouldn't have to use all that money, but I, as I said, but we are just doing a complete overhaul of the, of the, uh, the, the plan there, because it's just, it was just set up on a basis that is not working very well in reality right now.
And I, I just want to make sure we look at in areas that we can service with reclaim that might be served with potable right now? Just making sure that we conserve those areas, because then that creates potable capacity for us, so we're not having to spend 300 million dollars, or whatever it is, on the, um, the water treatment plant.
We, we, we definitely are trying to make sure Cypress Lake is being pushed out as far as it can, but, but it's, it's, we're eventually gonna need 5 million gallons more if we continue growing. But, but we are trying to push out that expense as long as possible.
Okay.
The, um, on page 177, yeah, the one that has the downtown phase two and the electric plant repurpose, and it's under the funding source of other, that 5.6 million, what are we thinking that is grants? What are we thinking other is?
So, we got a couple of, uh...
I can tell you the 150,000 is, um, other is funded under CRA. They've agreed to fund, uh, the repurposing of the util, the electric plant.
Well, that's not gonna be 150, I mean, that maybe is just like a...
No, that's just the beginning.
That's maybe just like a design or something.
That's all it is, that's all it is.
And that's not gonna be enough to cover the whole downtown phase two, is it?
And, and, oh, you see, I talked to Terry Friday, they just got the, uh, PO for the company to do the, the ground study for all the, the spills over there. They just got that Friday.
So, where, do you think the 5.5 million is coming from?
Okay, so, we have options to, one, which, don't listen to this option too hard, is the cash option, right, and just expending the cash, because we can do it, uh, we don't want to release that kind of cash. We could go to do the CRA and see if the, they will leverage to loan out the money we need. That's another option, so we don't kick up too much cash. Two, us finding a source in order to loan, and third option, which was in conjunction with Amy at the City of Kissimmee giving her input, was to go through a grant option, but finding 5.5 million dollars in a grant, not gonna happen, so we know that. So, the likelihood is, you know, we're trying to get the CRA to, um, loan it out for us, you know what I mean? And, and so we can use it. Um, I don't want to put that kind of debt and bond it out at this point, unless we absolutely have to, but I don't want to carry that weight, it affects our bonding credentials, we don't, you know, we're at a point where we're reducing debt, we don't want to get back into it. So, those are the options we are massaging at this point.
How much money the CRA's got?
Not 5.5.
Not, not 5 million, they would have to, they would have to loan out as well, but it would, uh, and then they would loan it to us, so, that's an option, just some creative strategy there, so that we don't put it on, okay? Uh, but it is a priority to find out, we've been trying to find the best strategy to do so, so we can get this thing going, because, you know, it's a pretty penny to broker out right now. Jay, which you met, he's gonna give us some options that he may think of, um, kind of thinking outside of the box and seeing what we could do versus, like I said, using up and eating up cash.
And remember, some of that comes out of stormwater and some other funds, some of that, we could take some of that money from, not, not a lot, but, and then we got the 300,000 from the state, which is, again, not a lot, but it's 300,000 dollars less. The other option we could do is scale that back, and we kind of did, you know, I told...
Well, we could get Councilman Cooper to front us, so, mate.
He's almost done with this house.
I'm reaching for him, all of them.
Do we have any other questions on the conclusion of the budget here?
Yeah, do you have the number of, like, what the differential would be to go to 4% or 5%?
I, I don't, but, um...
And then, the other thing would just be, like, what fund sources could that come out of? I mean, is it only like general fund, or is some of that can be funded if you're a stormwater employee? Can it be paid out of the stormwater fund, or, you know, like, I guess, just that kind of idea? Is it, I just ask them out of the general fund?
Usually, what we do is, um, I have several projections already out there. It has to come out of the funding source that that payroll resides in, so it will hit all funds across the board that has funding. I know off the top of my head, just the general fund to do the 3% raise was 740,000. I don't, I have the breakdown by fund, because I did that payroll projection for 2%, 3, 4, and a 5. So, you want the numbers for all of those?
Yeah, that would be great, to share with all of us.
Did you, Pennsylvania Avenue, we could borrow the money too?
We, we could, that's an option, and then, again, we'll take council direction to do that.
What's Pennsylvania Avenue?
Talk about Pennsylvania Avenue.
Oh, just the...
Is it 10th Street?
Yes, sir.
From Pennsylvania to Massachusetts, 11th Street?
All the way to Florida, Florida, 10th Street to Massachusetts in Pennsylvania.
About 11th and 12th Street.
I'm drawing a blank, where did we, for the phase two, what, I don't remember the streets we included. I just, I'm drawing a blank, I, I know Pennsylvania, 10th Street from Florida to Massachusetts.
Uh, we did, Pennsylvania is from, uh, 9th Street to, uh, US 192, and then 10th Street is from Florida Avenue to, to New York and Massachusetts, I don't remember which one it is. is from Florida Avenue to New York and Massachusetts. I don't remember which one it is.
Mass.
It's gotta be Mass, yeah.
And so I said, yeah, so I said, so, yeah, so it's four blocks one way and three the other, three or four the other way, so.
So you didn't do Eleventh or Twelfth Street?
No, that's considered phase four of the projects. We're gonna do the alleyways and Eleventh and Twelfth Street at the same time, for the fourth phase, because we're gonna do Pennsylvania, then Massachusetts, then come back into Eleventh and Twelfth Street and the alleyways.
Are we done?
Thank you all for sticking around.
Thank you, Wendy.
Do we have a consensus for?
Good job.
What we've done here?
Oh, we're done.
Y'all look around the room and see all the all-stars that have stayed here to the very end. Thank you, guys, and we certainly appreciate Wendy and Dawn and the city manager for all the extra work and all the heads of all the departments. Thank you so much. You guys are all-stars.
You going to the hospital now?